Good morning, everyone. Can the clerk please take the roll call?
Watts.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Beckler.
Here.
Brunteen absent. Jewell.
Here.
Alfs.
Here.
Dahlgren.
Here. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone today to today's Planning Commission hearing. The meeting is open to in-person participation and may be observed online through the Placer County website. If you'd like to make a comment on any item today, the Planning Commission clerk will announce when you are at a lineup and provide testimony. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open a public comment for the specific item which you would like to address, which may include public comments for matters not on today's published agenda or hearing items. Each commenter will be entitled to three minutes of comment, and you will only be given one opportunity to speak on each item. Thank you for your consideration as we work to ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has an opportunity to do so. Please also be advised that today's hearing is being recorded and will be available on the Planning Commission's webpage following this hearing. As we don't have any items on the consent calendar, I will move on to the next agenda item, which is a report from our planning director, Mr. Chris Bohulie. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Chair Dahlgren, commissioners. Chris Bohulie, Placer County Planning Director. You should all have a copy of my planning director's report, and there are copies at the front table for any members of the public. Wanted to start with upcoming Board of Supervisor items. First, wanted to note that next week, the Board will be taking up the TBAP Amendment Package related to provisions to accelerate workforce housing in the basin. The meeting will be held in Tahoe at the North Lake Tahoe Event Center. And then, as a reminder, the Planning Commission recommended approval on a series of seven to zero votes for the Amendment Package back on September 11th. I also wanted to let you know that the Hopeway Apartments Appeal Hearing is set for December 16th. As mentioned at your last meeting, the county received three appeals of the Planning Commission's decision from October 16th. As a reminder, those appeal forms and information are posted on the project website should you wish to view them. As far as upcoming Planning Commission meetings, your next scheduled meeting is December 4th. We have two items that are tentatively set for that hearing, including the Ritz-Carlton residences in the Martis Valley area and a development agreement for Property 1A in Placer Vineyard specific plan. So those are the two items tentative that would move forward on the 4th. We don't have any items scheduled for the 12/11 hearing date, so staff is proposing that that meeting be canceled. Following 12/11, then 12/18 would be your next scheduled meeting. We are currently targeting four items for that hearing, including an informational presentation on the Affordable Housing Nexus Study. I should also mention that staff has received two appeals of recent zoning administrator items related to variances, and those will be calendared for a date in January. Also, wanted to note a few administrative updates. As a reminder, once again, we are targeting that League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy in mid-March. Once the registration becomes available, we'll be reaching out to all of you to see who is interested in attending. And then, lastly, wanted to mention that the next round of those quarterly reports, quarterly project reports, will be provided to you in late January. That concludes my update to you, or report, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Do you know the location of the Planning Commissioner Conference in March?
I believe it's in Anaheim. I don't have the actual location.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Commissioner, Mr. Bohulie? Seeing none, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Awesome. The next item on our agenda for the Planning Commission reports, do any commissioners have any reports or information they would like to share out? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on. I will now open public comment for any matters not on today's agenda. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to comment. So if you have any comments on any items not on the agenda, I don't see any in the room, do we have an ADA accommodation online that would like to comment on items not on today's agenda?
We do.
Okay, please go ahead.
Diane, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings, commissioners. What would you do without me? All right. Okay, so, as you know, I'm Diane Louise Alessi from Christian Valley Park Community Services District and the director there for, and also six decades in the county, and a regular District Five caller because Placer County's future is decided here, not in Sacramento. Proposition 50 just gerrymandered our conservative majority into three diluted political districts. Our rural voice is now outnumbered three to one by urban interests that want to pave over our ag land. That is not representation, it is erasure. But you still control the general plan, zoning and every project approval. You can refuse to surrender local sovereignty by adopting a "Placer first" policy. Every project must prove it preserves ag land, protects groundwater, and fully funds infrastructure before approval. Fast-tracking rural conservation easements to lock in open spaces now, forming a syndication of conservative counties such as, and not limited to, Placer, El Dorado, Nevada, Sutter, and more, to capture and pool resources to fight state overreach. And commissioners, go on offense with unity. This syndication can pass a joint resolution for an Article V Convention of States to amend California's Constitution in two precise ways. First, strengthen Article 11, Home Rule, subsection 711 with explicit language. "Bland use," and I quote, "regulation in an inherent municipal and county affair." This state may preempt only upon clear and convincing prima facie evidence of a statewide concern that cannot be addressed locally," end quote. Second, codify the statewide concern test so Sacramento can never again hide behind vague housing crisis rhetoric. Quote, "Before any state law or SEQA override may supersede local zoning, the state must prove by empirical data in the administrative record: (1) A quantifiable crisis unique to the region;[730.91][730.91](2) That local tools are demonstrably inadequate;[734.91][734.91](3) That the override is narrowly tailored and fully funded by the state." 50 conservative counties sending identical language to the legislature and Congress is leverage, not symbolism. It focuses, it forces, pardon me, Sacramento to meet the burden or back off. I remind you, you swore an oath to Placer County citizens, not the state agencies. Use your zoning power like a dam. Hold back high-density sprawl until Home Rule is restored and the state proves its case. Protect our dirt or watch it become someone else's concrete. The road to what is right for our villages is not an easy path, it is the challenging path of bravery and standing one's ground. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Diane. We got your comments in writing. I appreciate it.
Yes. Yes, of course, and I have the strategy attached to that.
Thank you so much.
Beyond my comments, I appreciate that if the public would go look at that, it'd be more convincing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No other public comment for items not on today's agenda. So we are now moving on to our first item on today's hearing agenda, the conditional use permit for the Cisco Grove Campground. The planning commissioner is the decision body for this item, and the staff presentation will be provided by senior planner David O'Leary Eros.
Good morning, Chair Dahlgren, commissioners. I'm David O'Leary Eros, senior planner, here to present the Cisco Grove CUP modification, which in short is for the rehabilitation of an existing 144 camp spot campground. The project's located at 48415 Hampshire Rocks Road, immediately north of Interstate 80, south of Nevada County, and within the Cisco Grove community.
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Beckler?
Here.
Bruntine absent. Jewell?
Here.
Alves?
Here.
Dahlgren?
Here. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone today to today's Planning Commission hearing. The meeting is open to in-person participation and may be observed online through the Placer County website. If you'd like to make a comment on any item today, the Planning Commission clerk will announce when you are to line up and provide testimony. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open a public comment for the specific item which you would like to address, which may include public comments for matters not on today's published agenda or hearing items. Each commenter will be entitled to three minutes of comment, and you will only be given one opportunity to speak on each item. Thank you for your consideration as we work to ensure that each citizen who wishes to comment has an opportunity to do so. Please also be advised that today's hearing is being recorded and will be available on the Planning Commission's webpage following this hearing. As we don't have any items on the consent calendar, I will move on to the next agenda item, which is a report from our Planning Director, Mr. Chris Bohulie. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Chair Dahlgren, Commissioners, Chris Bohulie, Placer County Planning Director. You should all have a copy of my Planning Director's report, and there are copies at the front table for any members of the public. Wanted to start with upcoming Board of Supervisor items. First, wanted to note that next week, the Board will be taking up the TBAP Amendment Package related to provisions to accelerate workforce housing in the basin. The meeting will be held in Tahoe at the North Lake Tahoe Event Center. And then, as a reminder, the Planning Commission recommended approval on a series of seven to zero votes for the Amendment Package back on September 11th. I also wanted to let you know that the Hopeway Apartments Appeal Hearing is set for December 16th. As mentioned at your last meeting, the county received three appeals of the Planning Commission's decision from October 16th. As a reminder, those appeal forms and information is posted, they are posted on the project website, should you wish to view them. As far as upcoming Planning Commission meetings, your next scheduled meeting is December 4th. We have two items that are tentatively set for that hearing, including the Ritz-Carlton residences in the Martis Valley area and a development agreement for Property 1A and Placer Vineyard-specific plan. So those are the two items tentative that would move forward on the 4th. We don't have any items scheduled for the 12/11 hearing date, so staff is proposing that that meeting be canceled. Following 12/11, then 12/18 would be your next scheduled meeting. We are currently targeting four items for that hearing, including an informational presentation on the Affordable Housing Nexus Study. I should also mention that staff has received two appeals of recent zoning administrator items related to variances, and those will be calendared for a date in January. Also, wanted to note a few administrative updates. As a reminder, once again, we are targeting that League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy in mid-March. Once the registration becomes available, we'll be reaching out to all of you to see who is interested in attending. And then, lastly, wanted to mention that the next round of those quarterly reports, quarterly project reports, will be provided to you in late January. That concludes my update to you, or report, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Do you know the location of the Planning Commissioner Conference in March?
I believe it's in Anaheim. I don't have the actual location.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Commissioner, Mr. Bohulie? Seeing none? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Awesome. The next item on our agenda for the Planning Commission reports, do any Commissioners have any reports or information they would like to share out? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on. I will now open public comment for any matters not on today's agenda. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to comment. So if you have any comments on any items not on the agenda, I don't see any in the room. Do we have an ADA accommodation online that would like to comment on items not on today's agenda?
We do.
Okay, please go ahead.
Diane, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings, Commissioners. What would you do without me? Okay, so, as you know, I'm Diane Louise Alessi from Christian Valley Park Community Services District and the Director there for, and also six decades in the county, and a regular District Five caller because Placer County's future is decided here, not in Sacramento. Proposition 50 just gerrymandered our conservative majority into three diluted political districts. Our rural voice is now outnumbered three to one by urban interests that want to pave over our ag land. That is not representation, it is erasure. But you still control the general plan, zoning and every project approval. You can refuse to surrender local sovereignty by adopting a "Placer first" policy. Every project must prove it preserves ag land, protects groundwater, and fully funds infrastructure before approval. Fast-tracking rural conservation easements to lock in open spaces now. Forming a syndication of conservative counties such as, and not limited to, Placer, El Dorado, Nevada, Sutter, and more, to capture and pool resources to fight state overreach. And Commissioners, go on offense with unity. This syndication can pass a joint resolution for an Article Five Convention of States to amend California's Constitution in two precise ways. First, strengthen Article 11, Home Rule, subsection 711 with explicit language. "Land use," and I quote, "regulation in an inherent municipal and county affair." This state may preempt only upon clear and convincing prima facie evidence of a statewide concern that cannot be addressed locally," end quote. Second, codify the statewide concern test so Sacramento can never again hide behind vague housing crisis rhetoric. Quote, "Before any state law or SEQA override may supersede local zoning, the state must prove by empirical data in the administrative record: one, a quantifiable crisis unique to the region; two, that local tools are demonstrably inadequate; and three, that the override is narrowly tailored and fully funded by the state." Conservative counties sending identical language to the legislature and Congress is leverage, not symbolism. It focuses, it forces, pardon me, Sacramento to meet the burden or back off. I remind you, you swore an oath to Placer County citizens, not the state agencies. Use your zoning power like a dam. Hold back high-density sprawl until Home Rule is restored and the state proves its case. Protect our dirt or watch it become someone else's concrete. The road to what is right for our villages is not an easy path. It is the challenging path of bravery and standing one's ground. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Diane. We got your comments in writing. I appreciate it.
Yes, yes, of course, and I have the strategy attached to that.
Thank you so much.
Beyond my comments, I appreciate that if the public would go look at that, it'd be more convincing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. No other public comment for items not on today's agenda. So we are now moving on to our first item on today's hearing agenda, the conditional use permit for the Cisco Grove Campground. The Planning Commissioner is the decision body for this item, and the staff presentation will be provided by Senior Planner, David Orlie Uros.
Good morning, Chair Dahlgren, Commissioners.
I'm David Orlie Uros, Senior Planner, here to present the Cisco Grove CUP modification, which in short is for the rehabilitation of an existing 144 campspot campground. The project's located at 48415 Hampshire Rocks Road, immediately north of Interstate 80, south of Nevada County, and within the Cisco Grove community. The campground extends west into Nevada County, which contains an additional 30 acres and 273 campsites. However, our review is limited to the Placer County portion of the property, which is on approximately 32 acres. Surrounding uses include Interstate 80 to the south, forested land to the east and west, and additional campground uses within Nevada County to the north. And there you can see the county line. Here is an overview of the project as proposed, which depicts the county line by section of the campground, as well as the location of the existing campsites. So some background, the Cisco Grove Campground has been an established recreational use in the area for over 50 years. It was first approved by the Planning Commission in January of 1972. This approval includes the 144 campspot tent and RV camping spaces with winter campsites, a motel, a general store, and associated recreational facilities. A conditional use permit modification was later approved in 1978 to expand recreational and storage facilities. Since that time, the restaurant and motel have been removed, and the project has changed ownership several times. Over the past two decades, maintenance of facilities and infrastructure has declined on site. The current owner, Sun NG Cisco Grove RV, Inc., acquired the property in 2021 and now seeks to reinvest in the site by rehabilitating existing facilities and adding new amenities to create a resort-style campground. Historic annual visitation has averaged about 47,000 guests per year, but in recent years, that number has declined due to aging infrastructure and limited amenities. So existing development on site includes both the earlier-mentioned camping spaces and a camp store, bathroom, and laundry facilities, tennis courts, a wastewater treatment plant, ball fields, a playground, and a dog park. Utilities include four wells, two water storage tanks, and an upgraded wastewater treatment plant. These photos provide a snapshot of winter conditions, including the access road from Cisco Grove, the existing lodge building, and some views of camp spots, and general views across the site. And here are some summertime photos showing the site without snow, along with the existing entrance, the lodge, restroom facilities, which are proposed to be remodeled, typical campsites, existing internal roadways, the existing playground, and an aerial of the site for the general campground. So that brings us to the request today, which is to renovate facilities and provide new amenities consistent with modern resort-style campgrounds. The project would maintain the existing 144 campsites and would enhance and expand amenities for campground guests. Key components include refurbishment of the Welcome Center, General Store, Maintenance Building, and three restroom facilities. Addition of new amenities, including a swimming pool and pool building, miniature golf course, pickleball courts, a craft pavilion, an expansion of the dog park, expansion of the tubing hill and pavilion, and jump pillow, and provision of onsite employee housing for up to 32 staff members located in a mix of RV units and mobile units. And all amenities will be for the exclusive use of registered campers. No day access will be permitted. I would note here that an errata was issued for Condition 1 that directly specifies this, so just wanted to note that. Here are some conceptual photos of the proposal, illustrating the character of the proposed improvements, including the new campground gateway entry, a pool complex, tubing hill, art pavilion, and jump pillow. So operationally, the campground will continue to function much as it does today. Tent and RV camping will occur from mid-May through mid-October, with RV-only camping permitted during the winter months between October and May. Annual visitation is expected to remain around 47,000 guests, consistent with historic averages. All campers will access the site through the guardhouse on Hampshire Rocks Road, and parking is provided at each campsite, as well as near new amenity areas. For employment, they do propose 15 full-time, year-round employees, with up to 80 seasonal employees, with no more than 40 employees on site at one time. So that brings us to zoning ordinance consistency. So campgrounds are regulated by Section 1756080 of the Placer County Code, which includes standards related to campground density, setbacks, internal roadway widths, and paving materials, and recreational facility use. Staff has confirmed that all standards are met. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project in accordance with SEQA and the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance. The document was circulated for public review from August 6th through September 5th, 2025. Three agencies provided written comments, the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Placer County Air Pollution Control District, and the Truckee Fire Protection District. Comments from the Regional Water Quality Control Board were standard in nature and outlined the typical processes and procedures. Placer County Air Pollution Control District noted a typographical error, which has been addressed via an errata to the initial study, and requested clarification on the requirement of their general rules, which have been subsequently incorporated as conditions. The Truckee Fire Protection District also provided comments related to General Fire Protection Service funding and highlighted general plan policy that a long-term comprehensive fuel reduction and management program be prepared for certain projects, and that with a "will serve" letter, and that a "will serve" letter be required for the project. A fuel management and fire-safe plan were developed by DUDAC for the project. The requirements of the plan have been incorporated as Conditions 24 and 25, noting that the project is located within a state responsibility area. Condition 10 requires that the project comply with the fire protection regulations established by the State Board of Forestry and provide a letter from the California Department of Forestry that the project is in compliance with these regulations, while Condition 11 requires a "will serve" letter from the appropriate fire district describing the conditions under which service will be provided. Regarding funding, staff reviewed LAFCO annexation information from when the district annexed the parcel into its service boundary in 2006. Staff then conferred with the auditor's office and received confirmation that funding to the district remains in accordance with the funding structure that was agreed to by the district at the time of annexation. The environmental analysis concluded that with incorporation of mitigation measures related to aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology and water quality, noise, and tribal cultural resources, all potential environmental impacts will be reduced to less than significant levels. The project was reviewed by the Donner Summit MAC, first in January and again in July of 2025. At both meetings, staff and the applicant presented the project and responded to questions regarding fire safety, circulation, and amenity use. The MAC expressed overall support for the project, noting that it would revitalize an existing campground and provide enhanced recreational opportunities for visitors. No community compatibility issues were identified at that time. Because of the project's forested setting, a fire-safe plan and emergency evacuation plan were prepared by DUDAC. Two evacuation routes were identified, both of which connect to Interstate 80 via Hampshire Rocks Road. Evacuation modeling concluded that the entire campground would be evacuated within the performance objective response times identified by the fire district. The plan also includes ignition prevention measures such as designated smoking areas, fire extinguisher locations, and rules for campfires and equipment operation. Fuel modification zones will be implemented around the structures and roadways consistent with CAL FIRE guidance. Let's see here. And with that, in summary, staff finds that the proposed project is consistent with the Placer County general plan and Forest Zoning District. The project will revitalize an existing longstanding campground use without expanding its capacity. Environmental impacts have been thoroughly analyzed under SEQA and reduced to less than significant levels through mitigation, and the project has received support from the Donner Summit MAC. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program pursuant to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and Section 18.16.010 of the Placer County Environmental Review Ordinance, and approve the conditional use permit modification for the Cisco Grove Campground to renovate the existing campground and provide new amenities subject to recommended conditions of approval.
David, real quickly, if you would mention the errata to the conditions, thank you.
I would note that, again, that there was an errata prepared for Condition 1 related to limiting the use of the amenities to registered campers. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
In addition, sorry, Chair Dahlgren, just also wanted to mention that there, as David mentioned during the presentation, there is also an erratum to the mitigated negative declaration. And so, wanted to make sure with Item 1A that you would adopt a mitigated negative declaration and erratum, and the rest of the language in 1A is fine.
Do you want to read the errata into the record?
The erratum is contained in Attachment F.
Is it the one we got this morning with the red lettering?
No, that's the errata to the conditions. But as Attachment F to your staff report package is the erratum to the MND.
Okay. And we don't have to read the one that we got today into the record? Alex?
It should be read into the record for clarity.
Do you want it?
Oh, I have it.
I can read it in if you want me to.
Okay, so it reads, "The project consists," and it's Condition 1, "The project consists of a conditional use permit modification to allow for the renovation of a 144-site campground, which includes the addition of amenities as provided on Attachment B. Use of camp amenities, including the snow tube hill, swimming pool, and miniature golf, shall be limited to registered guests of the campground."
Thank you. Awesome. Do we have any questions for David? Rich, go ahead.
Okay, a couple of clarification questions.
Sure.
The campsites, you know, you have RV camping and tent camping. Are they separated, or are they the same campsites all the way through?
So there are 60 separate RV campspots that are wintertime-operated. So those are the ones that are exclusive to RVs. The rest are a mix.
Okay, and so they're designed to accommodate the modern RVs, which are like big buses?
Correct, and I think the applicant can maybe speak to their limitations on the size of RVs.
So we'll ask the applicant that. And then, just another one, consideration, this is within the Truckee River area of responsibility. But was there any consideration that for wildland fire, there's a Forest Service fire station in Big Bend?
Yeah, so it's in a state responsibility area, and it is in the Truckee Fire Protection District. The closest one is at Soda Springs. So there was not any mention raised of the need for additional facilities, such as a new fire station or anything of that sort.
Okay, well, I was just going to make a point that there is a fire station in Big Bend that would deal with the wildfire, not the medical response, but wildfire in the area would be handled by that, too.
Any other Commissioners have any questions for David? Go ahead.
So what we're addressing today is within the Placer County portion. Are there similar changes being recommended to the Nevada side?
They did, and those have already gone through Nevada County's process, I believe about a year ago.
Okay, and then all access is through that single point of access, so the whole facility comes off of 80?
That's correct, yes.
Any other Commissioners questions? Is the applicant here today? Can you come on up to the microphone, state your name?
Good morning. My name is Ezekiel Bossonbrook. I represent Northgate Resorts, who is managing this property. I'm the facility manager.
First, can I ask you, are you agreeable to the recommendations and conditions of approval and the errata as they were read into the record today?
Yes.
Awesome. Go ahead and tell us anything you'd like, or we can ask you questions.
Okay. Thank you, David. That was much smoother than I will be, I'll say that. I've talked to a lot of the locals around the area and people that have come in the past. I've only been there for four years. I actually moved from Michigan, but a lot of locals are very excited about this, and I hear memories of times they had growing up there as kids, and the property is just very rich with all of these memories, so we're really excited about that. Like I said, my name is Zeke Bossonbrook. I'm the property manager for Cisco Grove Campground. Thank you for considering our proposed project today. Northgate Resorts is a family-owned company that owns and operates over 30 camp resorts throughout the country. We have seen tremendous growth and success and have one of the most awarded RV resort portfolios in the nation. Our success is the result of the company's operational expertise and ability to maintain quality as it has grown. Northgate purchased Cisco Grove Campground in the summer of 2021. The project before you today is our effort to enhance the existing facilities and operations so we can optimize the visitor experience. We have designed our improvements to minimize the disturbance of previously undeveloped areas while making every effort to meet modern-day visitor expectations. We look forward to working with local businesses to implement the project and for the opportunity to create jobs for the local community. We are excited for the opportunity to offer a premier campground facility in the county. We want to thank the county staff for working with us to bring this project forward today. Northgate started this process over three years ago and has faced many delays throughout the process. We are grateful to finally be here at the Planning Commission and eager to move forward. We look forward to continuing to work with the county as we implement our vision. At this time, I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rich.
I had a question with regards to the separation of tent campers as well as RVs. You can have, you know, the RVs now are like buses. And so what's the size limit or how you're handling the various RVs?
We've actually measured out every site that we have, and we load it into an app called CampSpot, but the tent sites are mixed throughout the campground. If it's a smaller site that doesn't have enough space for an RV, then it turns into a tent site. I suppose we'd be open to tenters camping on an RV site as well.
So you can handle any size of RV?
Yes. Yes, the number of RVs will have to be limited depending on the size of the sites. But when they book their registration, they input the size of their rig, and we make sure that the site accommodates their rig before they get there.
Okay, well, that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will now open it for public comment for this item on the agenda. Is there anybody, anybody in the audience today who would like to speak on this topic? I have one. Come on up to the podium, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Wes Hotchkiss.
Oh, you've got to get up to the mic.
My name is Wes Hotchkiss. I'm a neighbor of the campsite. I've used the campsite over probably the last 25 years, so I'm very familiar with the site. Happy it's moving in a better direction. I think it'll be a positive for the area. Couple concerns, though. All of my neighbors in that location have really been hit hard with fire insurance. One concern that I have, and being in that park the last 25 years, is the responsibility of campers being in the area and letting their fires burn during the night while they're sleeping and not being attended. We all know, living in the Sierras, that we get high winds at night, crazy things happen with weather. I'm concerned about, is that going to be controlled somehow? Whether someone goes by and makes sure these are extinguished? Uh, whether someone goes by and makes sure these are extinguished? Uh, is someone gonna be watching the weather? That needs to be on top of, I think that's probably my biggest concern up there. The other thing is, is that they continually raise our insurance for fire up there. So how is this going, how's this, this going to affect our future fire rates? Right now, with California Fire Plan, every time there's a change, they increase our rates. If it becomes a, a high-risk area, they change our rates, it goes up. It's very, it's, it's hard to afford it right now. Um, that's, that's the other concern. Um, but I, I'm really positive about the, about the improvement up there. I think it'll bring a lot of, uh, good times in there. We had a lot of good times, my family had a lot of good times in there, but there is, uh, there is that concern.
You have one other question, Dave? I forgot.
Length of stay.
What?
Length of stay.
Oh, length of stay, yeah.
Um, the other thing is, is for the last few years, the length of stay in the campsite has kind of been, it kind of allows another group of people, you know, travelers coming through, um, having their motor homes, they stay for a couple, two or three days or a week, and then they move on. But when they stay for months and months and months and months, it seems like the area is then affected a little bit differently. People going through our places, we don't know who they are, whatever. Um, so that was the other, other concern, but anyways, that's all I have to say.
Awesome, thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. We'll have those questions answered by either staff or the applicant. Is there anybody else in the audience today who would like to speak on this item? Sasha, do we have anybody ADA accommodation online?
I see no hand raised.
All right, um, no other public comment, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring staff, or staff is, you can stay there, and have David answer the questions from the public comment, if you wouldn't mind?
Uh, yes, so, um, regarding, uh, the campfires, they will have, uh, staff assigned that will make the rounds each night to make sure that campfires are put out. Um, I would, uh, say Zeke may have some more to add on that. Um, the other question?
Fire insurance. I mean, we're not the, and length of stay, we're not the fire commi, we're not the insurance commission, so I don't know that we can answer that for you.
Regarding, uh, length of stay, um, so California Housing and Community Development does set, um, limits on what we can require. Um, my understanding is that there, that we're not able to set any kind of limitations on length of stay at the campgrounds, so.
Okay, Chris?
I might also just add, as it relates to the campfire, um, concerns that were brought up, there is a condition of approval, Condition 25, if you, um, wanted to take note of that, that addresses ignition control and addresses campfire as well, and, and, uh, provides some, uh, definition around, um, what can be, uh, or, uh, protective measures that need to be taken, so I can read that for, um, for you.
Yes, please, yes.
Uh, so again, I'm reading from Condition 25, ignition control, campfires. Campfires shall only be permitted at designated campfire sites. Designated campfire sites shall be located a minimum of thirty feet from unmanaged vegetation, vehicles, and structures. Campfires outside of designated campfire sites are prohibited. Tools for extinguishing campfires, including shovels, shall be available at all campfire sites. Campfires at campfire sites may, uh, may be propane or natural gas-fed year-round, wood or charcoal-fed fires shall not be permitted during the Truckee Area Campfire and Barbecue Ban, June through November, and whenever red flag conditions are predicted or declared by the National Weather Service. So, uh, there are some operational conditions, um, included in this, uh, package to address campfire concerns.
And for the gentleman who asked the question, this package is available online on the Placer County Gov. website, you can read all the details. Um, applicant, did you have anything to add on the fire? Come on up, Zeke.
Uh, yeah, we are mitigating all, all possibilities of a fire. We'll have twenty-four-hour employees going around and checking and verifying, um, and, like, like he said, we're, we don't burn during non-burn times. I think, uh, traditional campfire would be limited to the wintertime if we have winter camping. Um, and also, we're part of the Firewise community, I don't know if, was it Les? Wes? Yeah, I don't know if you're involved with that, Wes, but we are helping clean up on the community, too, so, um, all the defensible space, any twigs, leaves, we're doing a whole lot of cleanup to make sure that we don't have any fire issues. And we do have seventeen fire stands throughout the park. Um, and then for the, uh, the long-term stay, we limit it to thirty days, but we are getting pushback from resorts that are asking if we could, um, make an exception to that because they have workforce housing needs as well, so, um, we're open to extending past the thirty days, actually. That answers that.
Alex or Chris, if, the, the comment, you can sit down, Zeke, thank you. Um, housing and community development is the agency that oversees state housing, and they're the ones that give us policies and procedures and mandates that we have to apply. So, what, I'll just, let, give it to you, Alex.
Just a quick supplement, thank you, Commissioner Dolgren. Um, we did encounter a similar issue on, on another, uh, RV campground operation that we processed many years ago, and I did have some conversations with the, uh, state housing and community development at that time, um, and they indicated, uh, not only that we were not allowed to, to, uh, place length of stay limitations, uh, on those facilities anymore, that is, uh, under the state's authority, um, but they do view, uh, that, that, that those, uh, facilities have some, uh, utilization for seasonal worker employment, uh, particularly, uh, folks that travel for work, like construction workers, uh, that are, that are able to utilize those things, and that is part of the background of why that policy, uh, is in place at the state level.
Thank you, thank you. I mean, you could always control it through price, you know, there's a way to control length of stay through cost, but, um, that's something for you to decide. And the question of insurance rates, we're not the insurance commission, can't help you there. Um, did we have any commissioner questions for either the applicant or, go ahead?
Yeah, I mean, along the lines of the length of stay, so facilities like Thousand Trails, you're, you're limited, you can only do fourteen days consecutive, there's different programs, so I assume, depending on the type of facility and the ownership, I don't know why they wouldn't be able to set those types of standards, but maybe...
Sure, and, and I think that's a, a fair question, and I can clarify, um, the county could not impose a length of stay limitation.
Ah.
The operator certainly may choose to have a length of stay limitation, uh, as part of their operational standards.
I see. Did you?
Okay, yeah, interesting concept that certain facilities are looking to have their employees stay somewhere else instead of providing that themselves, so, anyway.
Commissioners, any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Or, okay, um, we'll go into deliberations. Um, any comments, questions, ideas, thoughts, before we get to motions?
Yeah, just real quickly, so I, like, others individuals here have frequented that facility since the mid-nineties, and I know families that were there. I think that was originally a Thousand Trails facility back in the seventies, so my, uh, daughter-in-law, her family gone to that, so I'm glad to see, you know, it's, it's, it's always been a nice facility, but it's, it's aged over time, and I'm glad to see that somebody's taken the, the position to, uh, take that on and, and kind of bring it back up to the standards it was in its heyday. Um, one comment on, and maybe this is a question, on, it's limited to, use of the facility is limited to those that are within the facility or paying to, to camp. How about walk-ins? Are you gonna control that? Because I know that, that snow hill has always been a big item for people to walk in, and it, there were times where the gate was controlled, but, uh, you would see cars, there'd be a couple hundred cars lined up to go across the freeway and then come in, and so I, I would hope that there would be restrictions there.
Zeke, can you come on, back up? That's a good question.
Yeah, um, there, there were times when the gate was broken, we've had a lot of cars come in and just random people show up. We are controlling that very heavily right now. Um, and the winter sports will be off limits to any outsiders, it'll only be for the campers as of now. Um, we do have a lot of loco response that want a snow hill because it does turn into a problem, people start parking on the road everywhere, so as I talk to Alex, we might address that later on down the road and reconsider opening the snow hill, but as of right now in this, no, it's off limits only to the campers.
Are, are all those roadways posted as no parking? So as you come off the freeway and you go over the, the bridge, and then there's a, the road splits again, I don't remember the name of the, of the roads, but I would think that would be a not, wouldn't be conducive to allowing parking just from a county perspective.
I, I don't know if the roads are signed no parking, do you, Zeke?
There, there is up and down Hampshire Rocks Road, um, but there are spots where they can park, too, so, it's, uh, and, uh, Gold Park is right there, they're opening up. So there's, there's other little spots around there, they can go sled.
And just to clarify for the commission, the purpose of the errata to the conditions that was provided this morning is to clarify, uh, that the resort amenities, the access and use of those resort amenities is limited to the registered guests of the camp resort, and, and that includes for the Snow Tube Hill.
That was my question, and then if, if the owners decided that they did want to open that sometime in the future, what's the process for them to do that?
They would come through a use permit modification.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, if there are other questions or comments for anyone, we can go to a motion. Does someone wanna pick it off?
No, I just had one other quick question before the motion. I think the, I know it's not in our sort of purview to allow the workforce housing, it sounds like the intention is not, but it's quite possible with the pushback and pressure, they could accommodate it. I just don't know if there's anything we can do about it as a commission, so that, that's the only concern, just based on the public comment, but otherwise, it, um, it seems like a good, good remodeling, use, renovation of the property. So, that's my only comment.
David, did you have anything else to add, or?
Nope.
No, we don't have anything else.
Chris? No, okay. Um, would go to a motion, does somebody wanna pick us off?
Chair Dolgren?
Yes.
Um, Anna Crozer, um, just to add clarity to the record, um, for the recommendation, um, one A would be adopt a mitigated negative declaration, errata, and the associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and then one B would be approve the conditional use permit modification for the Cisco Grove Campground to renovate the existing campground and provide new amenities subject to the recommended conditions of approval as modified by the errata, and these should be taken as two separate motions.
Okay, and we'll just use them as right into the record by county council.
Since I've stayed there before.
Okay.
I'll, uh, recommend the Planning Commission take action to approve, uh, following item A as right into the record.
Can I get a second?
I second that.
I have a first and a second, can I get a roll call, please?
Alves?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Dolgren?
Yes.
So make a motion, the Planning Commission, take action to approve the following item B as right into the record.
I second that as well.
I have a first and a second, can I get a roll call, please?
Alves?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Dolgren?
Yes. The decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment, or anyone that submitted written comments on this item. An appeal must be filed within ten days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. Thank you. This item's closed. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the Planning Director's determination regarding alternative stormwater management methods at the Winchester subdivision. For this item, the Planning Commission is the decision body. The presentation will be given by Associate Planner Jared Peters. Good morning, Jared.
Good morning, Chair Dolgren.
Good morning, Chair Dolgren. I just wanted to make a brief mention, um, on this item, um, given that it is a bit unusual, so I wanted to, uh, just provide a brief explanation about why it's, uh, before you today. Um, it is a Planning Director's determination, um, however, I have referred that, uh, determination to the Planning Commission. As explained in the staff report, the Placer County Code allows for the Planning Director to refer interpretations to the Planning Commission for a formal determination as part of a, um, public hearing. As this interpretation might be of interest to, um, property owners and the community association for the Winchester community, um, I decided to recommend, or refer it to the Planning Commission, uh, for a formal determination, um, in the interest of transparency and disclosure to, uh, property owners, uh, within the Winchester community. Should note that this, uh, item was, um, uh, mailed, or mailed notice was provided to all of the property owners within the Winchester community. And so with that, I am going to, um, ask Mr. Peters to deliver the staff presentation for this item.
And thank you for bringing it to us, that's really helpful.
All right, well, thank you, Chair Dolgren, and good morning, commissioners. Jared Peters with the Planning Services Division to present the Winchester subdivision's stormwater requirements, Planning Director's determination. The requested determination would affect the entirety of the Winchester subdivision, roughly outlined on the screen here in blue. Subdivision is located between Christian Valley and the Meta Vista Communities and is accessed off Sugar Pine Road. The applicant, Jerry Johnson, is requesting a Planning Director's determination that condition four of the Winchester subdivision commu, uh, conditional use permit may be satisfied through the use of alternate stormwater management methods than drywells. Specifically, the request seeks confirmation that the county, through the Building Services Division and the building permit process, permits alternatives to the currently specified use of drywells and filter strips on all lots within the subdivision. The ruling contained within the staff report has been referred to the Planning Commission by the Planning Director in line with Section seventeen oh two oh five F. The Winchester subdivision was approved by the Board Supervisors on August third, nineteen ninety-three. At that hearing, the board modified and subsequently certified the EIR and incorporated the mitigation measures into the conditions of approval. Subdivision is largely built out with only two phases remaining. On screen is an abbreviated chronology of this, of this specific request. The conversation between staff and the applicant began in August of two thousand twenty-four, with staff providing determination in Au, in October of the same year. The applicant then submitted a request for a Planning Director's determination in August of this year. Since then, staff has reanalyzed the request and is bringing forward the recommendation found within the staff report. The mitigation measure in question is mitigation measure twenty-nine in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program shown on screen, which identifies best management practices to be implemented by the project. A brief excerpt from the FEIR, final EIR, is also included on screen, noting that the project's CSCNRs were expected to call for drywells and downspouts. At the board hearing on August third, nineteen ninety-three, the board took action to remove the mitigation measure previously shown, determining that it was not necessary to determine the project would have less than significant impacts on water quality. Despite the action by the board, condition of approval four was approved with the language highlighted on the screen, seeming to indicate that drywells were to be used as outlined in the FEIR and mitigation measure. Since the original approval of the project, the county has adopted the West Placer Stormwater Quality Design Manual, henceforth referred to as the Design Manual, that establishes updated stormwater quality standards. Under the Design Manual, all new structures, including single-family dwellings, must implement onsite stormwater quality treatment facilities. Acceptable treatment methods include drywells, disconnected drought spouts, rain gardens, forest pavements, vegetated swales, tree implanting ma, tree planting and maintenance, and other improvements designated to, uh, designed to intercept, treat, and infiltrate stormwater runoff. These measures include surface, uh, surface runoff and stormwater, uh, these measures ensure surface runoff and stormwater quality are managed onsite effectively, effectively reducing water quality, uh, impacts. These requirements are implemented for single-family dwellings through the county's Building Services Division and the building permit process. Staff has reviewed the request in the context of the certified EIR, the original COAs, relevant county records, and current, uh, and current adopted county standards and guidelines, including the Design Manual. Based on the official board meeting minutes from August third, nineteen ninety-three, it is clear that the board determined that the drywell and filter strips were not necessary to mitigate drainage and water quality impacts to less than significant levels. Although the conditions were not formally revised at the time to remove that, the language referencing drywells and filter strips, specifically within COA four, the intent of the board is clearly documented in the meeting record. This establishes a strong basis for interpreting the condition in light of the board's original determination. Additionally, the, the manual has since been adopted and provides a comprehensive and flexible framework for evaluating and treating stormwater runoff on a site-specific basis through a variety of BMPs or best management practices. through a variety of BMPs or best management practices. Notably, the Design Manual did not exist at the time of the original project's approval, and now offers a new approach for managing lot-level stormwater quality impacts that did not previously exist. In consultation with the Department of Public Works and Engineering and Serving Division, the staff, uh, staff would recommend an interpretation of the condition such that the language in condition of approval four provides a non-exhaustive list of potential BMPs rather than prescribing a specific stormwater quality method, and that the Design Manual offers a framework for evaluating the appropriateness of various BMPs. These alternatives are capable of meeting or exceeding the Winchester subdivision's drainage and water quality objectives, and therefore can be found to fulfill the intent and purpose of the original conditions of approval. Staff received one piece of correspondence, uh, in, in, uh, in support of the, of the request. Uh, staff then also received two questions from members of the public. One asked whether the project would impact their property. This individual was not within the subdivision and was informed it would not impact them. The other question asked how the determination would be implemented. Staff informed them that it would be implemented as a part of the building permit process by the Building Services Division. When the Winchester Community Association was asked if it had any position on the request, the WCA provided a response that it was neutral on the request, but would want to review a soils engineering report prior to amending their CCNRs, uh, requirements for drywells. So based on the analysis contained within the staff report, staff recommends that the planning commission take the following actions. Determine that the request is consistent with the previously certified, uh, environmental impact reports prepared for the Winchester subdivision project in accordance with Public Resources Code Sections two one zero eight three point three, as it does not trigger any of the conditions in Sequel Guidelines Sections one five one six two through one five one six four. And furthermore, approve the planning director's determination that alternative stormwater quality management methods may be used to satisfy condition of approval four of the Winchester subdivision's conditional use permit subdivision, uh, sub two B, two nine two CUP one five, uh, one five five zero, subject to review and approval by the county. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Chair Dolgren, if I, if I may just add, I, I know Mr. Peters didn't read this part into the, the, the record, but, um, the slide states that it's a recommendation to the board of supervisors. It is not, um, it is a, um, actions that the planning commission would take. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Um, any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Peters? Go ahead.
I have a question, um, just so I understand the timeline historically. So in nineteen ninety-three is when the board modified the FEIR to sort of strike the language where you would need a drywell or a filter strip, right?
Correct.
But then at that time, just curious, what was the management technique then to avoid runoff?
It's my understanding that most, if not all, lots have been developed with drywells. Um, at various points, there may have been different interpretations of the condition and whether they were required, recommended, whether it was, uh, reviewed at building permit level. This has been building out for almost thirty years now.
Yeah.
So there's potential for a variety of interpretations. One of the goals with this project is to get a final written interpretation of this condition so that we can avoid confusion in the future.
Gotcha. So the people that have been building since nineteen ninety-three, when that modification was made to the FEIR, because the, um, conditions still applied, people may have been following that condition versus not doing anything from a management perspective for the water runoff.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I should also note, it's my understanding that the Winchester Community Association has their own requirements for stormwater drainage, and I believe they do have a requirement in their CCNRs, uh, for drywells. So they have been, uh, the community association at least has been looking for drywells. Um, the exact position of the county over the last thirty years is, is not clear, but the community association has been reviewing the middles.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions for Mr. Peters? Is the applicant here today? Come on up. State your name at the mic. First of all, are you agreeable to the conditions as they were stated today in the previous hearing?
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
Morning. My name's Jerry Johnson. Haven't been in a planning commission hearing on Winchester since nineteen ninety-three. And it was in the old building. And I really didn't think I'd be back ever again. However, um, in, there were two hearings in ninety-three before the board of supervisors. The first one was in July. It ended in about one in the morning. It took that long. Project was highly opposed, um, by Christian Valley people and Meadow Vista people who wanted it to remain their twelve-hundred acre private park. And, uh, county staff, particularly the director Fred Jaeger and senior planner Dean Prigmore led pretty major opposition to the project. But it was finally approved and I asked, uh, that the board, I'm the one that was in every meeting. I purchased the property, the twelve-hundred acres in nineteen seventy-eight. I was twenty-eight. I could no more afford it than a man and a moon and, uh, had no idea what I was getting myself into, but, um, pretty determined. And so I did thirty-four years in law enforcement to support my family while I processed this project. During that hearing, I brought up the fact that the reason I was forced to run a sewer line five miles through Christian Valley to, uh, the Joger Treatment Plant was because the property doesn't perk. It wouldn't support septic systems. Water is not absorbed. It's clay. It surfaces and runs off. And it's still that same way today because it's the same dirt out there. I also was forced to oversize that line for eleven hundred and fifty homes at my cost through Christian Valley that were failing, their septic systems were failing. I offered to oversize it because there was a problem with the school in Meadow Vista and run a line down to the Meadow Vista area, um, and it would also handle the Applegate Treatment Plant that was failing. The county determined that that would be growth inducing, and so they denied it. But a few years later, they dug up two miles of our roads that I had just put in to increase the sewer line to handle the Applegate Treatment Plant. So I, uh, in, I thought the issue was done because the board voted four to one to eliminate drywells in that. The EIR is crystal clear that, uh, we overmitigated our drainage runoff, um, and that we, on average, provided for fifty-five hundred square feet of solid surface runoffs on each lot. Therefore, no other mitigation was required. And the project was approved. The board, like I said, voted four to one to eliminate those conditions. In twenty eighteen, I got a phone call from a builder and asked me what in the world was going on with these drywell requirements. And I asked him what, you know, he said, yeah, there, it started to require, the homeowners association started to require drywells. So I, uh, looked it up. I got the information from the public hearings in ninety-three and I provided them to the homeowners association. And I, I had just bought five hundred acres not to develop. I'm totally done developing in Idaho, northern Idaho. It's a private ranch. And I kind of thought it was taken care of. Well, it wasn't. Nobody did anything. The homeowners association didn't do anything and well over a hundred people required since eighteen to do these drywells and still are today. So I took it up again in early twenty-four because another builder contacted me and I said, well, they were taken care of. They said, no, they weren't. So I contacted the homeowners association and the county. The homeowners association refused to cooperate one hundred percent, have not been one bit helpful on this issue. Now they've, because they realized that there was a problem, they've told the homeowners, we're neutral on it. We're, we're going to let the county decide. Personally, that's not good representation for the people that they are supposed to represent. But I came to the county numerous times and got told, no, you're wrong. It's still in there. It has to be in there. I told them, like, like I told you, the reason I did a sewer line because it doesn't perk. They're running over, uh, they're causing erosion. There's a picture of just one. This is the first winter after this house was built a few years ago, and you can see that the water is running over, out of the drywell and eroding property or eroding dirt, and the water's running right down into Oar Creek directly. So I spent time with Jared Peters and, and, uh, he told me I was wrong, didn't cooperate, wasn't interested in cooperating. Uh, I asked numerous times to meet with, uh, planning director and, uh, missed through Mr. Peters, and he told me that he was busy. I finally did get a meeting with him and he said he would look into it, but I never was hearing back. This was in early twenty-four. So I pursued it further because that's just what I do. And finally, in November, in twenty twenty-four, uh, after numerous requests from county council, I received this email from county council Karen Schwab. And she wrote, Dear Mr. Johnson, my office has conducted extensive research on the history and documents related to the above condition of approval, including listening to the entire tape of the August third, nineteen ninety-three board of supervisors meeting on the Winchester project. Based on this research, county council has concluded that the board of supervisors did not, and not is underlined, take or intend to take action in nineteen ninety-three to remove conditions related to drywells in a Winchester final conditions of approval. I immediately responded and said, what did you consider? Because I had provided them with the minutes and the audio recordings of both the August and July hearing where the board voted. She refused to respond. And basically told me she doesn't represent me. So I continued on and I, I went after it again. And, uh, I got ahold of Ron Leehow, who was a supervisor at the time. Unfortunately, he passed away at the beginning of this year. He remembered it very clearly and said that he would help. Unfortunately, I think it was January of this year, he passed away. I also got ahold of Kirk Euler, who was a supervisor, um, during that time too. And, uh, it was Kirk and Ron Leehow who made the motions to have the conditions eliminated. I ran over the information with Mr. Euler and, uh, had a meeting with him. And we had a meeting with, uh, Supervisor Gusterson's staff and information was passed on as all the opposition that I was reading or had already mentioned to you and stuff. I, and I want to tell you that this is only a short part of what went on the last two years with this. But that meeting didn't go all that well. And Kirk wrote a email to Cindy Gusterson, Bridget Powers, her staff member, and me. And I just want to read part of it to you. With all due respect, this letter from Clayton, Clayton is another county council member, is complete and utter bullshit. Those are his words. In the July meeting, we went condition by condition directing staff to either keep or eliminate the conditions to which Jerry was objecting. Prior to taking up the drywell issue, you can hear Jerry ask for consideration to remove requirement or development notebook. You can clearly hear Leehow say stays, quote, unquote, meaning the board denied Jerry's request and conditions mentioned. Then we took up the drywell condition. You can hear Ron Leehow and me both say, get rid of it. And then toward the end, you can hear Osneck, who was also a supervisor at the time, say, quote, and we have enough nods, okay. And Kirk had the same tapes I gave the county and, uh, and, and the minutes. It's only because of the board making that motion to eliminate that requirement in the July meeting that it was necessary for staff to return with a finding of fact in the August meeting. If we didn't eliminate the condition, why would there be a finding of fact? I would really like a meeting with county council's office so that none of them who were there can tell me I didn't do what I clearly did. That was also ignored. And I kept it up, and I kept it up, and I kept it up. Finally now, without giving me any reason, you've had the motion to eliminate it. It's caused a lot of damage. The, the process that I was forced to go through environmentally to protect the water and all the things in that project were important to me. I moved on that property in seventy-eight and I still have my home there. I wasn't a developer that wanted to destroy a piece of land to make money. I was still there. It took me twenty-two years to finally make money. But I just don't understand the negatives. So I'm asking you to please approve what they've done now, but would you please look into why all this resistance? We'll, I'll deal with the homeowners association, but-
That would be outside of our purview at this-
Pardon?
That would be outside of our purview at this time.
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm deaf.
That would be outside of our scope-
Okay.
-at this time. We're here for this particular issue.
All right. Well, then I just wanted to get that, my request on record because I think it's unjust, unfair. And there's a whole lot of people that have spent thousands of dollars to do this, get this, you know, and, and to create this problem. And it's got to be undone. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you, staff, that you finally changed and said, let's do the right thing. But it shouldn't have taken all these years to do it. No, that's all I have to say unless any of you have any questions.
Stay right there. Does any, do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I just have one. Um, well, first I admire your tenacity. You've really been pursuing this for a long time and I admire that. I'm just kind of curious, are you here today and pursuing this on behalf of this goodness or out of the goodness of your heart? I, I, you know, you have standing.
I'm sorry. I'm-
All right. It's all right. Go ahead. I, I'll stop. Go back. Mr. Bahuli, I'm just kind of curious how this got to you then to us.
Yeah. So I think as Mr. Johnson mentioned, there's been a lot of back and forth, uh, between, uh, between him, between, uh, planning staff, between county council and, and so forth. I would like to make sure that the commission is aware, um, and, and provide some clarification to some of the comments that were made. One, the action that's before you in the planning director determination is not to eliminate a condition of approval. That would require, as the commission's well aware, an amendment to the, um, subdivision, um, uh, the, the, um, the final subdivision. Uh, what is before you rather is a inter- interpretation or a determination from the planning director of alternative ways to satisfy that condition. So again, the condition is not being removed or eliminated. Um, so again, a lot of back and forth about different options to, to address the issue that was brought up, um, options to eliminate the condition, which would again take a different path, and then ultimately landed on a, a path of doing a planning director's determination. But again, given the unclear, um, um, record and given the amount of time was why if, uh, since this was being handled through a determination, to bring it before the planning commission and do it in a open and transparent way and notify the property owners within the Winchester community about it.
And as long as the applicant understands that this is not an elimination of the condition, it's this before us, and that you're comfortable with this as the decision for today that we will be weighing in on.
Well, what is it accomplished then? If it doesn't eliminate the condition, like clearly a four to one vote from the board of supervisors told staff they're eliminated, what are you doing now?
I'm going to give that back to Chris because I don't know the history.
So again, as, as Mr. Peters read it, uh, or presented and is outlined in the planning director's determination, it allows for, um, staff, uh, county staff when reviewing, um, new projects- Director's determination, it allows for staff, county staff, when reviewing new projects to allow for other alternative stormwater methods to, to, or drainage methods to address the condition of approval or to meet the condition of approval, not just the current, current language in the condition.
Do you understand? I don't know how to explain it any better than that.
Well, let me ask this then. So you're not eliminating your vote for this, would not eliminate the requirement of dry wells?
It would only do this. What's on that screen? Our decision today would only do this. And that's what I had asked if you agree to these conditions as, as they're presented today. We're in this box. That's the box.
So if I bought a lot and I wanted to build a home there, can I be assured I wouldn't have to build a dry well?
I'm going to put that back to Chris. Chris, what's the process?
Yeah. I might call upon Phil Franz from ESD to provide a response. But again, it, it provides options for staff to evaluate.
He's asking for assurances and you're saying they're options. So if you could clarify the difference.
So Phil Franz with Engineering and Surveying. I guess I would say it's my understanding what we're doing is we're allowing alternative methods to be considered when a home comes in to be developed. Currently, I think the idea was that the conditions would say they had to do a dry well. And with this determination, we're saying they don't have to do a dry well. They can do other methods for water quality treatment. So I-
And who makes that decision?
Hold on.
That was my question.
Commissioner Watts?
Yeah. And that was addressed earlier in the presentation by Mr. Peters. It would be handled through the building, building department. There, through the permit process, the evaluation would occur at that point.
Does that satisfy your question?
Well, you answered the question, but it doesn't satisfy the problem that's been, was created by the staff not removing that condition when they were told to by four to one vote. So I guess if Mr. Peters retires and some new person gets in there, doesn't have all this history and information, they're going to have to dig me up and bring me back and do this all over again?
No, the interpretation will, you know, be, be linked through our parcel tracking service to the parcels in Winchester. And so property owners and staff will be aware of the determination that was made.
The bureaucratic answer is we don't have a time machine. They're doing it because this process is more expedient. It kind of gets you what you want, but it doesn't go back in time and undo what you believe should have been done originally. Does that make sense? This is what you're going to get if you, we go today.
Okay. Can, what do you, have you read the minutes or listened to the audio tapes?
No. I haven't personally, no. Were they provided to us?
So, so-
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe, maybe you need to go over the options.
He's, he's wondering about options.
Well, the options before us are the options that we always have before us. We make a motion and we vote on-
Yeah, I know. But if, if he's not agreeing with what we're saying, then what other options does Planning Department have?
Hold on. If you don't agree, I, I asked you when you came up, do you agree to the conditions as they were stated today? And you had said yes. Are you saying now that you don't agree with the conditions that we're voting on today? Because I'd asked you that when you first came up.
I think I agree that it may be a step, but they've left in all the options to continue to do the same thing or other things, and that's not what the board voted for. So-
I kind of need a yes or a no. Do you agree with these conditions or no? And then we have to talk about other options.
I think it has to go further. If you pass this motion today, I'm going to be back with-
No, it's us.
The county and ask them to clarify this, because I think this is a, a step to-
Okay. Well, stay right there. We're going to have commissioners ask questions. Hold on. Commissioner Beckler's been waiting to ask you a question. Hold on. Go ahead.
Well, it's maybe a question, just so I understand, if the, the action today is to provide, it's not a CUP modification, which was clearly articulated, and so the condition of approval H that's highlighted, use of dry well, blah, 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 is, remains unchanged today. What's added is language that's an interpretation to say you can use modern best practice techniques. And so from a county perspective, when they review building permits, if someone went to buy a property, my understanding is that county staff would look, might look at the condition, but also would have access to the interpreted language. Like that's part of the standard workflow and would say, yeah, you don't need a dry well. You could do these other things. It doesn't, to your point, give you an absolute that it removes that condition. So there is interpretation of error, that is a possibility, but it sounds like from a workflow, it's incorporated into reviews of recommendations on what's needed.
That's, that's correct. I may also just use this as an opportunity to add, since you brought up the condition or the use permit amendment or the subdivision modification, that should that be a path, since that was a question about what would options be, to actually modify and to remove the condition of approval, would be staff's position that that would take an action and have to be initiated by the owners of the, the Community Association and the owners of, of the subdivision in order to modify that, that condition.
I have a question for Hannah. I don't think, I, since I've been chair or even on the commission, we haven't had an applicant who potentially did not agree with the recommendation of staff. What do we do in that case?
So-
I don't have an idea.
So the applicant could make a request to withdraw his item from consideration. If you are in disagreement with what the action requested is, the commission could also vote on the item. If the item is voted down, it essentially accomplishes what it sounds like the applicant may be wanting, if I'm interpreting it correctly. Alternatively, if the commission approves the action, then the applicant could appeal that decision.
So would you like to pull your item and do you, don't, do you disagree with the direction that staff has put before us today? If you disagree with that direction, then he can pull his? And then we start over?
Yes. So as the applicant, he can request that his item be pulled from the calendar today.
So you can have this pulled today. And if you want to go full bore for the whole elimination of that item that Commissioner Beckler just read into the record, that's another process that has to happen. So if you're not satisfied with what's before us today that Mr. Peters presented, then that is your option. The other option is we vote on it and it goes forward, or we vote against it and you can appeal it. So what is your option today? Because I need to know for the legal purposes, what the applicant you would like to do.
Well, that's difficult. Obviously, it doesn't do what the board voted to have.
One second. Let me have Commissioner Watts weigh in.
So there actually, I believe there may be a third way to do it. Approve this, step in the right direction to meet what his objectives were, and then pursue separately a change to the use permit.
Hannah, is that one of the options?
At a later time.
Yes. So essentially, a decision on the action requested today wouldn't prohibit him from seeking a modification at a later date.
So if you decided to go along with the package presented today and we decide to vote on it affirmatively, it's not prohibiting you from going back and taking further action to eliminate item, what's the number?
H.
H in the future. But that's not on our agenda today. So this may get you further in the direction that you were looking to go, but it's not going to fix the problem from the past.
What's the quickest way to get the Board of Supervisors to make a decision on this?
Well, we're making the decision today and it's final here. This one's not going on to the Board of Supervisors. I could not answer that question. That'll be for- It's not.
No, it, it's a decision before the Planning Commission. It could be appealed to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. So if we vote, let's say we all vote yes or it passes, it could be appealed by paying $752, filing an appeal within 10 days, and then it would go to the Board of Supervisors. But they're still not dealing with that one item. We're only dealing with these two items. Do, do we want to take a 10-minute break and he can speak to the Planning Director and County Council about the options that are available?
Sure.
Okay. We're going to take a 10-minute break. You're going to speak to them about the options that we're going to, that you could explore, and then we'll come back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. 10-minute break. I'm going to reconvene in the meeting. In doing so, I am going to bring the applicant up, and he is going to tell us what he'd like to do, and then I will open it for public comment on this item. Go ahead.
Sorry. At this point, I want to make it a final solution. So I'm going to ask for a continuance of this hearing so that I can work with County Council, bring in Supervisor Euler, and see if we can get a clean solution to this.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Having heard that, I will now open it up to public comment. For anybody who are here in the audience that would like to speak on this topic, you have three minutes. Please come to the podium and state your name.
Good morning. My name is David Nevin. I represent the Homeowners Association in Winchester. Just wanted to clarify a couple of points. It's very true that all the versions of our conditional use permits do specify drywells and filter strips. As Jared mentioned, our CCNRs also specify drywells and filter strips. We were unaware that that was in some of our requirements prior to 2018. We hired an architectural consultant at that time, and since then, all the homes that have been built typically will have drywell or filter strips unless they're on a cottage lot and it's too small. I guess the final point I would make is that these alternatives need to get into the plans of a new lot owner prior to it even getting to the Planning Department, right? So Planning Department looks for us to have an approved set of plans, landscape plans, architectural plans, before they even see it. So just be cognizant that this will increase our costs if we have to determine what is the best method of mitigation of stormwater on a per-lot basis.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. Wayne Nader. I am a property owner in Winchester, owned property there for almost 10 years. This is a rather troubling issue. As you can see, it's been going on for extensive time, and it is clearly not the intent of the Board at the time in '93. Why it was mysteriously left in the conditions, nobody can see, seems to be able to point that out. What I, unfortunately, I didn't, until '18, this really wasn't an issue. The Winchester Board hired Larry Farina, who is a sort of the architectural construction expert for them, and he brought this up, and certainly showed that where it was conditioned in the initial approval, and it was also in their CCNRs. So they started enforcing it, and unfortunately, everybody knew, and they should have, that the soil types were not conducive there for this type of a system to deal with runoff. But they, you know, plowed forward. That should have been the time when there should have been a question of justification and viability of these types of systems, and that was not done. And I think the reason this has languished for so long, especially in the last couple of years, and I want to commend Jerry for stepping up. He lives in Idaho now. There's no benefit to him. He just cares about that 1,200 acres that he bought in '78, and he truly cares that people are dealt with fairly in Winchester, and they have not been as far as these systems. They are failing, and I think that was one of the reasons why it's taken so long is because there's a lot of CYA going on where, because there's liability issues with these systems failing. So there needs to be a resolution. I'm sorry that Jerry has decided to pull us back because it just drags us out. To take it to the Board is going to take a long period of time to do that. I am in support of this for two reasons. I know that there's going to be multiple options to deal with the issue, and there needs to be, and I know that the Board is going to put in their CCNRs. They will remove the drywell, I suspect, and they will say that their options that would be dictated by the county would be done to mitigate the runoff issues. I suspect that, but, you know, I have no voice on the Board, but I was hoping that that would happen. But this needs to move on, and I think this is the best solution to do that. So I would encourage you, even though Jerry's talked about not supporting it, let's get it over with. Let's move on. He obviously has the option to take it further if he wants to beyond this, as you've already stated. So as a former Planning Commissioner, I would encourage you to move this forward. You don't need to hear this again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Please come up to the microphone and state your name.
My name is Jean Merwin. I'm president of the Board at the Winchester Community Association. I've been a board member since 2018, came on shortly after Larry was hired for us. I want to support what Wayne just said, having options for our members and lot owners and homeowners would be a great benefit to our association and to our members. So I don't have a, we serve at the pleasure of the county. If the county says drywells and filter strips, that's what's in our documents, and that's what we check for. If the county can tell us that there are alternatives, we would happy, be happy to work with that as well. We would no doubt have to require soils engineers to advise the homeowners, lot owners, what kinds of mitigation would be appropriate, but flexibility is always preferred.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody else in the audience today that would like to speak on this topic? Seeing none, so I'll go to ADA accommodation.
We do.
Okay, go ahead.
Diane, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings again, Commissioner Stein. Louisa Lessie from Christian Valley Park Community Services District. And many years back, Mr. Johnson. So I'm going to just kind of just make this comment, the pushback for Winchester, because I was still here and raised here, a lot to do. It wasn't about just keeping a park. It was the basic CC Myers approach of kind of slimy developer that pushed the line through Christian Valley, down Christian Valley Road, and then strong-armed Christian Valley residents, parcel owners, to have to basically buy into that system because in their proximity of 300 feet. They had viable septic and their own mitigation, but because they were within that prescribed juncture, they were forced to buy in. When I was looking at property, one of the school properties, the 11-acre parcel down there off of Stanley, the buy-in at that time, eight years ago, I believe, was about $5,000 to vest in, and then it was going to be $125 a month for when the alarm goes off to go get the solids in your holding tank. But all, just the only thing the system was designed for was gray water runoff. I think what I'm kind of seeing here, and I'll just lay this out for you, Mr. Johnson, if they pull that back, the requirement, then you basically pull it back for everybody that was strong-armed into vesting into the system, in my mind. Maybe something wrong there? But I also fully agree that if it's open-ended like that, it's arbitrary, and it's open to backroom, kickback deals about different types of systems. I think it has to be very pinpointed in terms of what are you going to hold it to, and how are you going to treat the people that were hoodwinked and forced into buying into that pipeline? To me, I think it would have been probably even cheaper all the way, but I know that it was a conga line of palms being greased at the time, a lot of uproar here in Christian Valley, I remember going all the way back. And so I don't see that any of those things have completely disappeared, and I wonder that there's definitely a big opening there for fraud, waste, and abuse if it is not pinned down to exactly what other systems would be applicable and who could opt back out of having to be in that system. So with that, that's just a feather to think about in your hat while you're making this decision. I actually support Mr. Johnson.
Thank you so much, Diane. Appreciate it. All right. So nobody else? Okay, so that, I'm wrapping up public comment. Public comment is closed. We have a two-pronged process here.
Yeah, I got to get some clarification.
I will give you some right now. I got some from County Council. I got some clarification from County Council. Do you want to hear? Or you have a question?
Well, my question you may answer, you may not.
You want me to tell you what it is?
Well, if you want to.
Okay.
You're the chairman.
I will share. We have two options in front of us. The first one is to make a motion on the applicant's request to continue this item. If it fails, then we're going to go forward and make a motion on these and see what happens with those. And if they pass or fail, he can appeal. Did that answer your question?
I think you did. Well, maybe, let me, let me get a little, because what I was thinking is, at least what I'm hearing, if I'm hearing it right, is the Homeowners Association feels that they're obligated to the existing map and the environmental document. Okay. And of course, Mr. Johnson has gone through a horrendous process over the years, as you explained, and I can appreciate how horrendous it's been. And he would like to see this thing done finally. And we've heard other people in the audience, Wayne and other people in the audience saying, let's go forward. But at any rate, I guess what I'm thinking is maybe a continuation is best because, you know, the Homeowners Association, there's going to be an expense. I mean, if you got to open up the environmental document, as I understand it, and then also go through the process of changing the map, which means another meeting here and a meeting at the Board of Supervisors to change the map, I would imagine. And so the process is going to be not real easy. It's going to be fairly costly. And so at any rate, it seems like maybe a continuation would give the participants a chance to figure out how they're going to handle this, rather than us getting in the middle of what the differences of opinion that are out there within the subject. That's kind of where I'm thinking.
And I was thinking, because we've never had this before, well, I haven't as a Planning Commissioner, where the applicant has requested a continuance because they don't agree with the staff recommendations because what they truly want isn't included there. They want more than what's in front of us today. Then I'm also amenable to them continuing it because it's the applicant's choice. That's my thoughts. Go ahead, Ms. Beckler.
Yeah, and I would agree with both of you. The only thing I would just ask county staff, the worry I have is that if we do a continuance, and the other option is to go down the route of the modification to the CUP and the envir, that's a big job. And so I guess I'm trying to figure out what's, why, what would be the worst outcome of approving this today? It's already, the process is already done. It gets everyone further down the road. It doesn't solve the, this fundamental problem that it's in the documentation, but regardless if we approve it or not, this is a totally different process that would have to be taken. So I guess I'm, I agree that it's the applicant's choice, but at the same time, I don't see why we wouldn't approve it at this point because it at least gets you a step in the right direction.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, this gets you halfway there. It at least puts some process changes in motion while the other strategy is implemented. And you're right, I mean, that could be six months, a year. Who knows how long that's going to take. But does this give some relief? It gives the county, their position now is that there are alternatives based on BMPs and new strategies as we go forward. You know, sometimes requirements change for the better. Sometimes they change for the worse. So, I mean, this is, this gives them options, and if BMPs are practical and meet the legal requirements, then why not? You know, the HOA is going to have to make some decisions, but that's theirs. That's not ours.
I think the why not is, is the applicant doesn't want to. He had the discussion with county staff during the break and said he wants to continue it. That's the why not. There is a reason there that we might not be privy to.
Well, maybe if we can, I, again, if the applicant wants to do that, that's great. But I just want to make sure that the feasibility and cost of going the other route are understood before we move forward with the continuance. If I was in the shoes, I would move forward with this. I've already gone through the legwork and then can reconsider the bigger job as in a separate time. I just worry-
You know, I want to, you know, a continuation isn't a decision to go with, with a more extensive process. A continuation is just an opportunity for the people in Winchester to better understand what they're up against and make a decision as a community what they want to do. Because we're hearing different opinions here from the community. And so a continuation doesn't mean that this couldn't come back to us as stated.
As it is today.
If, if they can agree that that would be the way they want to take. Thank you.
So, Commissioner Watts?
Yeah, I echo Richard's comments. I really like this approach that the staff put together and the Planning Director put together. I think it opens the door to all kinds of alternatives that could apply to the remaining parcels that are out there in Winchester. But on the other hand, as you point out, Chair, he has asked to have put over a continuation, and I agree with Richard's take, the talk, and sports talk. I'm in favor of the continuation, so.
Just last question. So if, if the HOA reversed their requirements tomorrow, if we continue this, then those requirements stay in effect at the county level.
Yes.
So if, if you change this half, and the HOA is willing to change their half, then the process moves forward, or the, the solution moves forward while they're figuring out the legal completeness of removing those requirements.
Other than it doesn't resolve the issue.
And/or if we continue it, it gives the applicant more time to sit down and talk with Mr. Peters and talk to Mr. Boholi to come to agreement that this might be the best solution. He's not there today.
Right.
And it's his application. That's where I said, okay, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this item to a date uncertain. And first from me, can I get a second from someone?
A second.
A second from Johnson. Roll call, please.
Dogren?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Alf's?
I'll be the no.
Okay, that passes. We have continued your item. The decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed by anyone who appeared at today's hearing and provided comment. For anyone that submitted written comments on this item, an appeal must be filed within 10 days of today's date and shall be accompanied by a filing fee of $752. Thank you. All right. The next item on today's agenda is the 2025 Plaster County Code Amendment Package. For this item, the Board of Supervisors is a decision body, and the Planning Commission will be making recommendations to the Board. This item is presented by Senior Planner Lucy Rollins, who, Commissioner, Director Boholi, I just promoted you, is going to present to us.
Yeah, so I'll just do a very quick-
Hold on a second. Gentlemen, gentlemen, can you take it outside? Jared, Jared, can you take it outside? Thank you.
Give it just a moment. Okay, so good morning once again. Chair Dogren, Commissioners Chris Boholi, Plaster County Planning Director. The zoning text amendment package that's before you today has been in process for over a year and includes several amendments to the Plaster County Code that clarify and address ambiguities within the county code, particularly those related to code enforcement. And I think the Commission, as we go through some of the amendments, may find some, some tracking with, with some of the past projects that you've heard on appeal. So those types of items are intended to be addressed with this package, and it is quite large. There's, you know, over 20 amendments that are, that are recommended as part of this package. So today's presentation will be provided by Senior Planner Lucy Rollins. As this is Lucy's first time presenting in front of the Planning Commission, wanted to provide a brief introduction. Lucy's been with Plaster County for about five months and has experience with both municipal and private planning work, and so we're really happy to have her be part of our long-range planning team. She's involved in a number of key initiatives, including the general plan update, some of our housing code amendments that we perhaps may talk about a little bit later, and other major projects. So you'll be seeing a lot of her in upcoming meetings, and wanted to just provide that introduction before she comes up. So with that, I'll ask her to deliver the staff presentation.
Welcome Lucy. We'll go easy on you.
Thank you. Right. All right, good morning. Yeah, we're still morning. Good morning, Chair Dogren and Commissioners. As Chris mentioned, my name is Lucy Rollins. I'm the newest Senior Planner in the long-range planning team. I'm here to present the 2025 Code Amendment Package. Most of this package, you've heard before. At the time, it was the 2024 Code Amendment Package. We've renamed it just to be representative of where we are at currently. So the purpose of this is the bulk of the amendments included in this package, like Chris mentioned, are corrections, clarifications to help with interpretation and enforcement of our code. So our staff understands it, the public understands it, and it's very streamlined. There are a few that we'll highlight that are responding to development demand and new technologies such as electrical, electric vehicle charging stations. And overall, the goal today is to keep the code up to date and clear for both staff and members of the public. So in total, we have 24 proposed amendments. You'll see in Attachment A, it outlines all of them in a lot of detail. Not, or 23 of those are in Chapter 17. I'll go into those in more detail. And then the change in Chapter 9 is to the noise ordinance specifically, which allows a clear process for construction noise limitations. So that's, that is the Chapter 9 there. So I'm going to dive into Chapter 17, the more substantive ones. So the first one I wanted to mention is the Accessory Dwelling Unit, or ADU, amendment. So if you want to chap, sorry, excuse me, Attachment 18, which begins on page 166 of your packet for anybody in line. Right now, our code counts, there's a maximum limit of 25% of the floor area for porches on ADUs. The amendment, as proposed, removes that cap so it doesn't count towards the floor area, thus maximizing the allowable floor area up to the maximum allowed in our code, and doesn't restrict the size of the porch, which we've heard from property owners is currently a limitation. The second one on this slide, and this is half of the changes, and I know it's a lot, so I'm, I'm happy to dive into any of them in more detail. I'm just going through some of those bigger items today. The second more substantive one is the freestanding zero emissions vehicle charging station, which is the second one on that list. This amendment creates a new land use type and establishes standards for charging stations for electric vehicles and is specific to stations only for those. We include a process for conversion of gas stations to this, but it's specific to electric vehicle charging stations. The development standards included in the ordinance on Attachment A address setbacks, design, lighting, and signage, amongst other topics. This land use type would be permitted with a minor use permit and in most of the commercial zones, not the mixed use or OP zones or the office professional zones, and all of the industrial zones. The third one on this slide specifically is the, about halfway down, we have the electrified and barbed wire fencing. This provides standards for security fencing, including razor fencing, barbed wire fencing, and electrified fencing in commercial and industrial zones specifically. So I do want to clarify that this is not addressing standards for barbed wire for agricultural uses, agricultural, or sorry, agricultural or residential uses. Those are still required to comply with height and setback requirements as outlined in the code currently. This section is specific for that security fencing for commercial and industrial zones. It does have standards associated with it so that this fencing can't be within 300 feet of parks, churches, or schools, and is focused on that. So we've had a few questions about whether this impacts agricultural, which is why I wanted to mention that.
Okay, can we ask questions as you're going through this?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. The state building codes allow electricity and fencing, as long as it meets the building code. And so this is talking about electrifying fences?
So this is-
And so how do you, how, I mean, with the language of electrifying, how do you distinguish between what the building codes allows for electricity and fences anywhere and electrifying fences, which I guess are to give you a buzz if you want to cross it?
Right. So this specifically, and I'll pull up the ordinance just so that I can reference it if needed, is the standards for electrified fencing for security purposes. So we have height limitations, signage requirements on them, warning that it is electrified fencing. For the barbed wire piece of it, what portion of the fence can be barbed wire? Versus if you're going to have an electrified fence elsewhere, that does require an electric, electric permit. Let's know.
Okay, so you want to hang lights on a fence?
So if you want to hang-
Is that electrified fence or not?
No. So they're electrified fence, and I can pull up the specific definition here. Give me just a moment. We've added a new definition to E. So the fence barrier or enclosure consisting one or more strands of conductive wire or other conductive material that carries an electric charge intended for the entry or exit of persons or animals, delivering non-lethal electric shock upon contact. So hanging lights upon that doesn't meet the definition of what's considered electric fence.
Okay, so that's a code, it's written in the code.
Correct. We added a new definition to respond to adding this section to the code.
Okay, thank you.
So like I said, I'm happy to come back to any of these, but I'm going to go on to the second half. So this is the second half of the changes proposed. The first one on the list is another more substantive one. This is the minor parcel size or lot area deviation that would allow for lot splits under very specific situations for parcels that are currently ineligible due to their size in the ag-exclusive farm and forestry zones. I do want to note that in your staff report in that summary table, we did mention that includes the rez-ag zone. However, and I'll go into a little bit of detail on this, when we analyzed how many parcels could be eligible for splits under this, there was only one rez-ag parcel, so staff recommends removing that and having this only apply to ag-exclusive forestry and farm zones. So the purpose of this one is specifically for parcels that are within that 195 to 190%, 99% of two times their minimum parcel size. So for example, that'd be a 19.9 acre parcel in a 10 acre minimum. Right now, they are ineligible to be split because one of their resulting parcels would be less than 10 acres. So the purpose of this is for specifically parcels that meet that threshold of size criteria. They may be eligible for a single lot split under this deviation to result in two parcels with one or both of them being within 5% margin of that minimum parcel size. So now you could split that 19.9 into a 9.9 and a 10, for example.
Okay, this one is drawing some controversy. Okay, so I think the controversy in my mind, what I'm understanding, and you can clarify this, is so this is a one-time?
Correct, it's one-time.
So if they want to, if the zoning would allow them to resplit it later, they wouldn't really have this option, or they would?
Or if the minimum parcel size changed down the line, for example?
Yeah, say, say, say they have a, I guess what they're concerned about is this replicates through the process through far by fours down to real small parcels. And, and each subsequent division would include a provision that they could go lower than the, you know, the 95%. And so when does it stop, I guess?
So, yeah, that's a great question. So, and I will just preface that with, in our analysis, just for context, we analyzed there are only 64 parcels in the entire county that could be eligible under this. But to your question, right now, this minimum parcel size deviation would allow, under their current minimum lot area requirement, they could do one split. If down the line, either the county changed minimum lot area requirements in that zone or that zone was, or that property was rezoned, that would come back to the Commission to analyze whether this deviation is still appropriate, that minimum parcel size changes, would they be eligible? So this is, this would be a one lot split under their current zoning, and they would not be eligible under this current zoning in our code to do an additional split.
Okay, the, I'm reading the letter from the Agricultural Commissioner, Commissioner, and they voted 7-0 unanimously.
Yep.
And the wording that they wrote, and tell me if this is what you're saying, that the Agricultural Commission recommends that should this move forward, deed restrictions be mandated and memorialized and enforce each partial division be limited to only two resulting parcels, and that no further land division is allowed in perpetuity, which is part of Richard's question. Is that in there, or is that not in there?
That is not currently in this amendment.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. And I do want to sort of emphasize that, to your point, if we don't, right now, our goal is, especially with the Agricultural Commission and the ag plans and looking at the general plan, is to not divide agricultural land into smaller and smaller lots. So the intent of this is, we did compare it to the general plan policies, is that we do, the, we do believe it's consistent with the general plan policies to maintain large lot agriculture because it is that- because it is that 5% margin of error targeting parcels. There, we have a couple that are 19.96, perhaps the survey was wrong originally when they brought the parcel. So that's, that's the intent of it. But to your question, we don't have a deed restriction requirement that would prevent an additional split in perpetuity, but under their current zoning, they would not be able to do an additional split.
So we can talk about that when we vote, too?
Yeah, I think in my memory, too, this might have come up with the winery ordinance, too, where if somebody had a 20 acre parcel, and it turned out that they really didn't have a 20 acre parcel, they were within 5% of the 20 acres, but the 20 acres were kind of a breaking point in terms of the number of events they could have.
Right.
And so at least that's where I remember this coming up.
Right, and so this is, while not identical, it's sort of modeled after the intent of that is allowing that tiny margin of error, that wiggle room for those types of parcels that are close but not quite there. That's, that's the purpose behind this. But we can certainly dive into it, and I will go over the ag commission letter for anyone that hasn't had the chance to review it in a couple of slides. So on this slide, I do want to go to the next one we have, is the digital display signs is the next sort of substantive item. We've heard from property owners of houses of worship and other owners that they have a desire to put in digital display signs. So this amendment develops standards specifically for that sign type that addresses height, setbacks, separation, brightness, so different levels of brightness, day versus night, and how the messages are displayed. So for example, we won't allow rolling messages, so it does have to be a static message, though that can change every eight seconds. And just to be clear, we are not regulating the content, just how it is displayed. So this sign type would be permitted by use rather than by zone. It would be, it would require a minor use permit, and it would be available for public community centers, churches, libraries, museums, parks, and similar types of uses. And so depending on where they are, it's not zone-dependent. However, they are not permitted within 500 feet of residential agricultural zones, and does require 1,500 foot separation between them, so we don't get a clustering of digital display signs.
Lucy, one second.
Yeah.
I want to encourage the Commissioners to ask questions while we're going through this, while they're fresh in your head, so they're so different, they're not in the same kind of vein.
I do have one, I do have one.
Yes.
Commissioner Alzner and Commissioner Watt.
Size restrictions, let me pull it up specifically. I believe it's one square foot, or one linear foot up to 100 square feet, but that could be a different sign one, so let me pull that really quick for you. Because we do have a few different sign amendments in here.
Mark, do you want to ask your question?
Oh, sure, I thought she was looking something up. So I'm guessing, probably more of a statement than a question, that you're not regulating content?
Correct.
Because it's regulated elsewhere?
So we do not have the authority to regulate content. There's case law and actual laws that we cannot regulate the content of the messaging, just how it's displayed. So we can regulate size, colors, things like that, but not the actual content.
These are adjacent to roadways?
They are, they can be adjacent to roadways with some exceptions. So they are not allowed on any of our highways or Interstate 80. They're not allowed on, in the Tahoe Basin, on scenic corridors, and Placer Parkway, and one other that is eluding me. Let me see, yeah, so 65, 193, 80, 89, Placer Parkway, any designated scenic corridors, and within the Tahoe Basin, they would not be permitted.
So if there is objectionable content that's, you know, community-wide objectional identifiable, nobody can deal with it, they just let it go up there?
And I may turn to Hannah for, if you want to.
So to answer your question, the content of the signs would be subject to First Amendment Freedom of Speech Rights, and so that's why the county wouldn't be able to impose limitations on the substance of the sign.
I've done a lot of work on outdoor advertising on the state highway system, and they're allowed to have some limited restrictions. It's kind of funny, I didn't realize the county couldn't say, you can't put naked pictures on your signs and rotate it every eight minutes, eight seconds. This seems kind of odd, thank you.
And circling back to your question, it's one square foot per two linear feet up to 100 square feet for the digital display sign.
I did have a question on the signs, and then actually, I will go back to the lot size for a second. So on the signs, I, I understand that, I know there's another item later about the subdivision signs, and I did ask a question prior to the hearing to understand how community plan prohibitions apply to these. So in the subdivision signs, I think that was the one. So if a community plan, and I can't remember if the Granite Bay Community Plan prohibits digital signs, but I know there was a lot of controversy over a sign along Sierra College. It's a new digital sign, it's at a church location, it was ultimately approved to go in. And so is there, do any of the current community plans have the ability or not to prohibit these signs as well?
So I was, I don't know if they currently prohibit that, just to preface that. However, when a permit comes in, they do have to be consistent with zoning their community plan and the general plan. So if they are inconsistent with a requirement of either a community plan or a general plan, then that supersedes.
Okay, yeah, and I'm mistaken, it wasn't the subdivision signs, it was the open fencing. So, okay, so if a community plan did have restrictions on digital signs, again, I can't remember if the Granite Bay Community Plan did, but I know there was a lot of discussion, then that would basically supersede in that it would be disallowed.
Exactly, zoning is an implementation tool of the community plans and the general plan. So where those set a, prohibit something, that does take precedence.
Okay.
And Lucy, it may be helpful to just mention that these signs would be subject to a discretionary-
Yes.
-permit, a minor use-
A minor use permit, correct, yeah.
So those determinations of consistency with the general plan, community plan, and zoning ordinance would be, need to be, would need to be made in the affirmative when processing a minor use permit for one of those uses.
Okay, and then one other question going back to the parcel size, and I'm not going to make any comments, but, because this had, there was a workshop we did where I know rez-ag was discussed as a possibility, and I asked the question about the concentration of these identified 67 parcels. And at the time, it was stated that the 67 was all in District 4, or predominantly in District 4. And so I'm curious if that still is the case or not. And then I, what I don't remember at the time when this, we had the workshop, is that it was the 10 acre minimum? Is that new language that you guys have added for this amendment, or was that there before? Do you know?
That was, I believe that was there before, however, it is, so when I was describing it, that was just an example. This would apply to any farm, forestry, and agricultural exclusive zone up to, for example, the farm with 160 acre minimum. So they wouldn't get, able to get down to 10. They can be within 95% of that minimum allowed by their zone. So this is just saying that the smallest minimum lot area requirement that we're going to, that we're proposing allowing this in is the farm with a 10 acre minimum. But for, if you have 160 acre minimum, you would need to be at 159 point, it's a little bit higher, they're lower than that, but essentially within 95% of 160 acres, if that's your zoning requirement.
And if I, if I can also just maybe add on, to maybe answer the question, or one of the questions that you asked Commissioner Beckler, and I'm sure Lucy has the information at her fingertips, but the vast majority of the properties are, in my recollection, in Districts 2 and 3 perhaps, not in District 4. There likely are some in District 4 as well. But also just to kind of emphasize what I said on the, with the previous amendment, is that this would also, these requests would also be subject to a discretionary approval process. There would be a minor land division or a parcel map request that would come through, that would need to be evaluated. That would require public notification and review, environmental review of the request as well. So again, this proposed amendment doesn't rezone any properties, it doesn't, you know, circumvent any discretionary review process. It just provides an opportunity to look at a very minor deviation with their current zoning of the property.
Okay.
And I'll add to that briefly, is that the 50, sorry, 64 parcels that are eligible currently, they're the only parcels that meet the size criteria. There are other criteria as well, it cannot be a Williamson Act contract property, they have to be of a similar size and shape of the surrounding properties, and we define that in the amendment. But for example, if you've got one that happens to have a 10 acre minimum but is surrounded by 40 acre minimums, they would not be eligible because they would be inconsistent and not similar to the size and shape of their surrounding properties. So our goal is to not parcelize properties to smaller, keep it similar to what's around, but allow that opportunity.
So in that scenario, if there was a parcel that was, let's say, 40 acre parcels in the area, and someone wanted to subdivide a 39.5 acre parcel that sort of sits in the middle or somewhat adjacent, that subdivision into a two lot, which it sounds like is the only, they can only do it down to, if they, that wouldn't be allowed then because it would be too small compared to the 40 acre?
Well, it's a good question. So if the minimum lot area was 20 acres, for example, and all of their surrounding parcels have the same zoning but are larger, they are eligible for the subdivision. So what we mean by similar size and shape is that your resulting parcels would be similar in size and shape to what everyone around you is eligible for, so.
Based on their zoning limitation?
Right, so if all of your neighbors have 100 acres but they're eligible to divide, that doesn't prohibit you from dividing as long as everybody could have resulting parcels of a similar size and shape, pursuant to the code.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, back to the signs.
Yeah.
The digital signs. Now, I think where this has come up is in the Cisco area, there's a gas station that wanted a sign. And so I believe the state requires service stations to have a sign that lets people know that how much it's going to cost them to stop there and buy gas, and that they can buy gas there. And so do service stations, do they get to have a digital sign?
The display signs under this would not be allowed for gas stations. However, any signs, and Hannah, you may know, that are permitted by state law, are there, gas stations.
So I don't know off the top of my head, that's something that I could look into and get back to you guys on. But while we're still on signs, I just wanted to provide a little clarification to my response to Commissioner Watt's question earlier about the content. So because of the First Amendment, you know, you can't limit speech, but inherent in those First Amendment rights is basically the prohibition against obscene or profane material.
She's talking too fast for me to understand. Okay, well, I was asking about gas stations.
Yes, no, for the gas stations, we can certainly follow up on what is, what we, gas stations are allowed to under state law. However, they are not one of the uses that would be eligible for a digital display sign by these standards. But, so for example, if you think of like a gas station that has like a big welcome to digital display sign, they couldn't have that, but the signs that display the prices of the gas, we can follow up. I believe that's regulated by the state, but I'm not sure.
I mean, I think that's what the state requires, is that they-
If the state allows-
I think we can follow up on that. I believe Ms. Rollins is correct. I think it, the limitation may be strictly for the pricing of gas signs, but under the current code and under the proposed amendment, gas stations or other commercial businesses would not have the ability to take advantage of this provision. As she mentioned, it was, it's strictly for hospitals, institutional uses, churches, places of worship.
There's about 10 uses that are permitted.
Right, and commercial uses are not one of those.
Okay, so for the future, that may not really answer the question for, I mean, as far as what the basic question is, a lot of people would like to have a digital sign because they're clearer to see. And so basically, in terms of resolving the issue, it probably doesn't resolve the issue at this point.
It wouldn't resolve the issue for a commercial property owner that wants to, wants to have that type of sign. I would say that, you know, a kind of complete revamp of our sign code would be a major undertaking, likely something that we would do as part of post-general Plan update revamp to our entire zoning ordinance, probably when we would take on a revamping of our zoning ordinance and sign code.
Okay, thank you.
Because this does not apply to commercial or businesses, okay, thank you.
Anything else on those two before I move on? Okay, great. So the next one I want to touch on is the movable tiny homes, that's the third on the list. So for this one specifically, our, the existing code requires implementation of the California Building Code requirements such as fire sprinklers, wind and snow standards. We've heard from property owners and tiny home manufacturers, well, that while they can meet these, they are cost prohibitive. And so we've had very few, I think one, maybe two, tiny home applications since this ordinance went into effect, citing that as the issue, however, we are aware of a demand out there. Another challenge with the existing code is that we refer, like I said, we reference the California Building Code requirements, however, movable tiny homes are considered vehicles and are regulated as such. So their, their manufacturer unit is reviewed by HCD and/or the DMV, depending on the type of unit. And so our building department only has the purview to review exterior features such as decks, skirting, setbacks, things like that. The interior features are reviewed by the DMV and/or HCD. So when we reviewed the tiny home ordinance, we looked at ones throughout the state to see how other jurisdictions are implementing this, so that we actually have the jurisdiction to ensure they're meeting the intent of our fire, snow, and wind requirements. So we looked at other ordinances, we referred to technical guidance from HCD, we met with CAL FIRE, and we spoke with manufacturers. And we believe the amendments we have today will still meet the intent. They are going to require compliance with the National Fire Protection Association, or NFPA, standards, and/or the American National Standards Institute, or ANSI, standards. Manufactured tiny homes are required to comply with one or both of these to be permitted by HCD and/or the state, meeting those fire requirements. We would also require compliance with our hazardous vegetation ordinance because that's exterior, we can still require that. The only caveat to that is that the ANSI requirements for snow max out at 20 pounds per square feet for snow load, which we know is insufficient in the Tahoe Basin and much of eastern Placer County. But it does allow the local authority to do additional standards. So we met with other jurisdictions to see how they did it, and we're proposing that we require the equivalent of Title 25 roof live load requirements for snow. Depending on where the tiny home is located, they would be required to demonstrate by certification by the manufacturer that they are meeting the equivalent of the same requirement than any other unit would be required to meet. So we did run this past CAL FIRE to ensure those NFPA standards were fine with them, and they agreed with that. We met with the building department, and they agreed with this. So we're hopeful that, and we've spoken to manufacturers, they, they think this is more doable, and owners, while still meeting the goals of fire and safety. So we believe that this is achieving what we want within our jurisdiction to review it. So the final code amendment on this one that I will just dive into is smaller, but I wanted to mention because it's specifically related to your body, is the subdivision modifications and variance. So if in the event an amendment, a modification is proposed to a subdivision that would affect only one parcel, that could then be heard by the zoning administrator. However, it affects two or more parcels, it would have to come back to the planning commission. So that's the amendment that we're proposing there.
Quick question on that one?
Yes.
If the requested change for one parcel in a subdivision affects something shared by the subdivision, conservation easement, things like that, how, where does it fall then?
That would be deemed as impacting more than one person.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention, these are the things that have changed since, and we went over everything, is these are things that have changed since you previously saw this item in the workshop in September 24. We did remove the private non-commercial events piece. That is being reviewed in more detail with our code enforcement team, deciding about an approach for that. Changes that were added, we have added the RM 30. There's no change to the actual ordinance there, we're just updating the land use table to, it was inadvertently missed, so we're just adding it in there. As Chris mentioned, code enforcement items for their, making sure that their team has the enforcement tools that they need. Fence retaining wall combination at the board's direction in their July 2025 hearing, this was, is specifically to Placer Vineyards and Rio Vineyard specific plan, requiring efforts at communication between the developer and adjacent non- efforts at communication between the developer and adjacent non-purchasing property owners before they are approved for a increased height fence. And then, as I just went over, we've added the movable tiny home standards. And I just wanted to mention, because we've received a few questions and I believe there's a letter received, that the residential care homes or group homes is not included in this package. I believe that was originally part of the 2022 cleanup package. It was removed. Staff is working on that ordinance now. We are coordinating with the state to ensure we're, we understand requirements and are compliant with them. And we are planning for a public outreach process beginning likely in early 2026 and bringing that as a standalone ZTA in probably late spring or early summer. So it's when that will come, come to you again. So for this package specifically, our public outreach, we had the ongoing website. We did that workshop back in 2024 town hall in October of that year. We did go to the agricultural commission. So as Commissioner Beckler mentioned, we did receive a letter from the agricultural commission yesterday that was routed to all. If you didn't have the chance to review it, they are in support of the bona fide agricultural definition, however, have concerns about the minimum parcel size deviation. So their concerns with that is the division of larger parcels. And however, like I went over, we believe that this is consistent with the intent of the general plan policies to maintain those larger parcels within that 95% of the minimum lot area, making sure they're consistent with what is feasible around them and it can be done. I'll also mention that when we entered that September 8 meeting, the ordinance amendment was slightly different and they raised really good concerns that at the time, perhaps someone could take advantage and create a lot of different, or a lot of parcel splits. So that's how after it, we narrowed it so they're only eligible for one parcel split. So that in itself narrowed the eligible parcel list from upwards of 300 parcels in the county to that 64 that could be considered. So, but that letter is included and we're happy to address it if you have any questions. And then staff's recommendation, and I will just go ahead and read this because it is a mouthful so we have it, so please bear with me. So staff recommends that the planning commission make the following recommendation to the board of supervisors. One, determine the proposed action exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act guidelines 15061B3. And two, adopt an ordinance to amend Placer County Code, Chapter 19, Article 9.36, Section 9.36080, and Chapter 17, Article 17.04, Section 17.04030, Article 17.06, Section 17.06.050, Article 17.2, Section 17.2, sorry, Article 17.20, Section 17.20010, Article 17.22, Section 17.22010, Article 17.24, Section 17.24010, Article 17.26, Section 17.26010, Article 17.30, Section 17.30010, Article 17.34, Section 17.34010, Article 17.36, Section 17.36010, Article 17.38, Section 17.38010, Article 17.40, Section 17.40010, Section, Article 17.42, Section 17.42010, Article 17.54, Section 17.54020, 17.54030, 17.54040, 17.54070, 17.54140, 17.54170, 17.54180, 17.54190, Article 17.60, Section 17.60100, 17.60105, and Article 17.62, Section 17.62032, and 17.62185. Everybody got those memorized?
Okay, boy, you as well.
Interesting. Lucy, thank you so much. Stay there because I'm sure we'll have questions. I have a question. I know I have a comment. I'll wait. Anybody have questions?
I do. Let me see, there's a, let me see, I don't have your list up there, but any rate there's one that talks about the setback for pools in small parcels.
Pool equipment. Yes.
Okay. And basically what, you know, I guess I don't have a problem with that, but what I was looking for is we had an issue where we had a water feature that was only 18 inches deep.
Oh, yeah.
Jacent to the property line. And...
Yeah. I know what you're...
We were having trouble distinguishing between a pool and a water feature.
Yes. So...
I guess that's what I was looking for here.
Oh, pool versus water feature. I don't...
So Commissioner Johnson, the, the item that you're mentioning is addressed as part of this package, as Ms. Rollins brought up, that definition of structure.
Fourth from the bottom.
Is what was addressed. If you recall, the, the determination that was ultimately made was that the requirement of a electrical or plumbing permit did not constitute a structure for purposes of meeting setback definitions. So that is included in this package to provide some clarity around that set of circumstances from that project. But we didn't address pool versus, we didn't address the definition of pool versus water feature. I think the code is pretty clear. I'd have to pull it up, but I think a pool is defined as anything maybe 18 inches or deeper, but I'd have to, I'd have to clarify, or I'd have to check on that definition. But we didn't, we addressed that situation that you brought up by the structure definition change.
Okay. And that, which one is that now?
Structure, it says one, two, three, four, five, six, seven...
Fourth from the bottom, structure definition. It's the structure definition modification. It's the fourth from the bottom on this slide.
Fourth from the bottom, Rich.
Which is number 20 in the summary matrix in your staff report.
Okay.
Which I believe...
Any other commissioners have questions for Lucy before comments?
So tiny homes? How are they governed? Under what?
So movable tiny homes are regulated by the DMV or HCD depending on the type of unit. So the state came out with some technical guidance that really describes which type it is and who regulates it, but it's going to be one of those bodies that when a manufacturer produces it, that's permitted by that body. And then we permit where the location of it, but only the exterior features. They come out, do the inspection and ensure that everything is correct pursuant to their regulations for the vehicle.
Probably isn't applicable here, but how are they licensed? Are they, is the trailer licensed and then they build a home on it? Or is it built as a unit and then they're licensed?
That's a great question that I don't...
From the fees perspective, it's kind of an interesting...
Yeah.
Because you could get lifetime, if you enter, you register the trailer, it's a lifetime fee.
Right.
$10 a year or whatever it is. Versus if you have a mobile home, then you pay a regular transportation fee. Probably not applicable, but just carries...
I don't, I don't have the answer to that right now, unfortunately.
Any other questions for Lucy?
Just one question. Lucy, I think you did say this, but in the agricultural commission letter on the definition, they had requested to remove, I think, remove agricultural research. So is that in the latest definition of bona fide agricultural operation or?
The, I can pull up the actual definition. So the, the definition included in this package is the same definition used in the grading ordinance that their commission previously reviewed and approved. And so they're, I'm looking at their letter now just to confirm. Let's see.
Says, did have one concern regarding agricultural research.
I see. Let me see.
They're saying not to exclude it, but to clarify that it's associated to an educational institution, I guess.
I didn't see it. I have something that might help with the ag letter and these recommendations. What I was going to recommend is that we make a motion to remove number four, the bona fide agricultural use, Article 1704030, number 12, which is minimum lot area, Article 17, I'll read them later, and number 13, minimum parcel size deviation, and let them go back to the agricultural commission and work out the details so that they are compatible. Because the agricultural commissioner, they voted 7-0 that these are the things that they wanted to see, and I did not see them in the current update.
We received this letter two times yesterday, so unfortunately didn't have a chance.
I received it last night. So I went back and looked and I couldn't find, and I think their recommendations are solid, but I think it requires a conversation between, maybe even present these to them. So my recommendation would be that we remove those three at this point and then I vote on the package that's left over. But I'm, I'll make that motion. Four, 12, and 13. Four is bona fide agricultural use.
Four on which?
On her, this one.
Oh.
And her slides, four and five. So slide four, slide four, right there, it's number four. It's bona fide agricultural use definition.
It's number two in the staff packet.
Yeah. And then next slide, Lucy?
We got, I think you also mentioned the minimum lot area, which is on the bottom.
I did. Minimum lot area is number 12 on her.
Why would we, why would we, you know, when I, when I read the bona fide agricultural use definition, what they're talking about is if you're a rice farmer, you need to have flat ground. And so periodically in the operation of the disc game, the ground changes and they have to come back and re-level it. And so I think what that's talking about is, it's, it's not, it's not a, they don't need to go to the grading ordinance to re-level their field, basically.
Sure. But the agricultural commission wants agricultural research.
No, they're, they're saying, they're saying to specify, not to remove it.
They want to specify, not to remove it. I'm saying, I'm saying take it off of today's meeting. We don't vote on it. They go back to the agricultural commission and, and make it more clear. They want to add something. I'm not saying that we're going to take it away. I'm just saying it needs polishing between the agricultural commission and the planning commission. More time, just for those three items. Does that make sense?
Well, on that particular item, at least my understanding, talking to one of the commissioners, that's been resolved.
Well, we just got this letter last night from Josh, so if it's been resolved...
Where's Josh? He's not here.
No, he's not here. He should be helping us here. I was going to help him by letting it go back to them and they can talk about it. It's, it's not like an emergency. Not.
Well...
I'm going to make the motion.
Wait, wait, wait. We haven't done a public comment.
Oh, we haven't done public, thank you, Sasha. Thank you, Sasha.
Yeah. You have the science.
Okay. We haven't done public, we haven't done public comment. We haven't done, okay. Let's ask more questions. Do we have more questions?
Huh?
More questions from us.
So I think then just to clarify, my question is that currently that language is not clarified for the ag research, that, at least from the letter. Is that correct? That it should be associated with a recognized educational institution? Well, I'm asking, it's for sure not in there, right?
Do you mind repeating that?
Yes, I'm just, I'm just trying to get, I'm asking a question, not making comment, that there, the concern that was raised related to clarifying what ag research is, that's currently not in the package before us, right? Because this came late breaking last night.
Correct. The current definition, you know, at the end of it says conducting agricultural research as determined by the agricultural commission, commissioner, and the letter received yesterday asks for clarity to be added to that definition.
Okay. Other changes though, that were discussed in the ag commission, like the 10 acre minimum, maybe not 10 acre, but the two, you can only split two, those are incorporated. That was their feedback during the hearings prior, correct?
So the proposal before you, so what occurred in September, September 8th, when we went to their meeting, we had a proposed amendment. Following that, we made modifications to it. The agricultural commission formed an ad hoc committee that they reviewed the amendments that we proposed that are included in your package, and then they drafted this letter in response. So any changes regarding this letter specifically are not incorporated.
Okay. Thank you for that certification. And then just one other question, even though I got it answered separately, but I wanted you to say it out loud, for the electrical fencing and the fencing standards, because it only applies to commercial, I mean industrial, it does not change anything related to residential. There was discussion at the Fish and Game Commission that's in our packet around the issues with barbed wire fencing and fencing that has spikes because it impales wildlife and a whole host of other things, and then concerns about the putting fencing in water way. And even though that's not part of this package, my understanding is that could be handled as an amendment in a future time to get clarification about recommended fencing types or something like that for residential use. Is that correct?
Correct. Wildlife fencing best practices are not included in this package. The standards we're proposing are specifically to the commercial industrial and that clarification of the definitions of solid versus open. But we are not, in this package, proposing amendments to the design features of fencing countywide. However, that could absolutely be part of a future package.
Okay. And we could, as part of our process today, make a recommendation to evaluate that or no?
Sure. As Ms. Rollins mentioned, I mean, we do endeavor to bring forward these sort of cleanup packages. As I mentioned earlier, it, it's taken us quite some time to bring this one forward. We obviously have quite a bit of work within our long-range work program and we'll be bringing that back to you, probably at the early part of next year. But yes, we do kind of keep a running list of cleanups that need to occur and that should help inform, you know, whatever decision the planning commission makes related to the ag commission recommendations, that if an item is pulled out, that it would have to be included in a subsequent package that may be, you know, some ways out from, from being brought back for consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, the ag commission does agree with the grading. That's what their letter says.
Okay.
Now, the question about, where did this, question for staff. When the ag commission is talking about the agricultural research and tying that to an educational institution, what are they thinking about there? What were they thinking about? Because it doesn't seem to fit with the grading issue.
My understanding is the bona fide agricultural operation definition was reviewed and vetted in coordination with agricultural commission and then inserted into the grading ordinance and didn't make its way into the zoning ordinance. So this process is just pulling that definition word for word from the grading ordinance that they previously went over into the zoning ordinance. However, based on the letter, it does sound like perhaps they want to do some additional, like fine tuning of that definition.
As far as, yeah, I'm having trouble connecting an educational institution with grading ordinance. The grading ordinance has been passed, hasn't it? That's current? And so they're, they're saying that solved our problem, basically.
That, yes, that definition is currently in the grading ordinance.
So it doesn't have anything to do with the name of an institution, does it?
No. The, the definition is just so that when a application comes in and says they are this type of operation, we can verify that based on this definition, and I believe it says, as determined by the agricultural commissioner, that it does in fact meet that and then the requirements surrounding that use does apply.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess the paragraph in their letter is a little bit confusing, but...
Any other commissioners have questions for staff? Questions? Okay. I'm going to open it up to public comment. If there's anybody here in the room today that would like to come up and speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, commissioners, chairwoman. Still morning. I would like to...
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Martin Kohler and I'm a property owner over on Donald Lake. And I'm here today to express my support for the amendment to the item, the ordinance, 17.56.400, the tiny home. And with limited time, I'll go over a couple of things. The, what was well presented was the reason for the amendment and it was a kind of a cost. I would like to bring more of a real life to that as well. Frankly, it's more than just a cost. It's actually the reality of, of what's possible. In other words, normally how it's done is home is built and framed up and piped for... pipe for, uh, water and also fire sprinklers, and then a fire department comes and inspects it. Local fire department, because they are the ones that actually are in charge of approving the plans, um, because it's, uh, specific to a, a location, the fire sprinkler, because it depends on the, um, water pressure and, uh, those things. Um, when the, um, unit is being built in a factory, that doesn't work very well. So that's, that's, that's first big problem. Um, so it's not just a cost, it's actually the possibility of it. Um, the other item that I wanted to, um, bring up is that, um, and we have gone through this process, we, as has been pointed out, there's been very few people who actually went through the application, um, because, well, this is actually one of the big items. Um, fire sprinklers were designed, are meant to protect occupants. Um, they are not designed to prevent wildfires. Um, and wildfires are preventable by other items that are listed in the ordinance as well, and that is, um, uh, the, um. You have the actual separation between, uh, trees and any kind of vegetation and the actual structure. You have a, as a, in county, has also specifications for 100-foot distance, how it has to be addressed. And actually, fire department itself has that as well. They have their rules and they inspect. And actually, this year, in trucking fire departments specifically, they are starting to apply to everybody, not just the new purchases of a, uh, property, but everybody, which makes sense because wildfires burn everywhere, not just on a new property. Um, I am supporting this because, um, well, we have gone through the motions of how to deal with it and so forth, and we have frankly gone into a manufacturer and tried to address it, tried to, uh, retrofit it after the fact, since when it's being constructed, it's not very well possible.
Your time is up, sorry.
All right.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your support of the amendment.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Is there anybody else here in the audience today? Come on up, sir. Say your name for the record. Tell us which code amendment you're here to speak on?
Yes.
Or all of them. You're so inclined.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Pastor Rodney Thompson. I'm here, uh, representing Amazing Facts International and the Granite Bay Hilltop Church. And I want to talk specifically about the three sections on the sign, the digital signage. I'm, uh, I'm in support of them. Uh, we are located in Granite Bay on Sierra College Boulevard, the top of the hill. We have a beautiful $50 million facility that was built six years ago. And since we moved in, the only way I've been able to advertise our events onsite is temporary cardboard signs and/or vinyl banners. Uh, I've seen them all over the county, and I, I hate them. I think they look awful. I don't like using them myself, so I would appreciate if we could, uh, approve the digital signage. I know that there's, uh, a lot of controversy on it, uh, but they're not something new. They've been around a long time. People have gotten accustomed to them. And I, I appreciate the safeguards that were put in here for the brightness and how fast they can change and that sort of thing. And so I'm hoping and I'm praying that you're going to approve that. And I hope that even after that, you'll go even further and try to get under control all of the signs that are everywhere that just look bad. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Sir, would you like to come up and speak?
No, I'm stuck.
Okay. Um, Sasha, do we have any ADA compliance online?
We do.
All right, let's go to Diane.
Diane, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Greetings again, commissioners. Diane Luiz Alvesy from Christian Valley Park and, um, Chair Dogren. I appreciate you wanting to table, um, the, the lot split. I, I just have, you know, there's like this whole can of worms of this, what's okay for the low-income affordable quote, which I hate that term, um, set of rules for property use and splitting. And it, under SB 330, you know, SB, what was nine and 10, and all those different variances is that people don't realize that it may look or start with a private, um, property owner, but as soon as it gets transferred to a corporate entity or a church, which have something going on here in Christian Valley, which probably end up bringing up later, it, it kind of shifts. So if there's like, for instance, what the one here in Christian Valley is, is the reason, or the zoning ag rule is 20 acre minimums, well, the developer has a church. And the church is eligible under the RENA program to actually give it to an entity to which he will still control, and then he can further subdivide by changing each entity that handles it. So it's a slippery slope. There needs to be really tight, defined guardrails. And we're even having an easement issue because part of this easement for this property is supposed to go out to 49, but he's trying to utilize a bunch of other areas, which will come to your planning commission later. So you have this ingress egress issue too. So when you split these lots, that takes away from the total lot, uh, sizes as well. So there's this weird integration of when entities start flipping it and they get to bypass all of the regular constraints that we have, like for instance, Christian Valley is one acre minimums. At some point, a developer could just start wanting to split us, or is the county going to sit back and just, you know, run ripshod over our covenants that have been in place for over 60 years? I have a strong problem with that. So I really appreciate you wanting to table that. I think we need more discussion about tiny homes, and I'll just briefly say this. Coming from ranching and being around, you know, west of the Mississippi to a bunch of different states, other states handled this really well. Wyoming, because ranchers have the mindset, high wind, high snow load areas, they just take their mobile homes that they put the ranch help in, and they put a pole barn over it. So it takes care of the pitch, and even some of them in Idaho, friend of mine, they have rolled out doors.
Diane, I'm sorry, your time is up.
So I'm saying there's a million other ways to handle the tiny home.
Thank you.
Not just from the manufacturer. With that, I yield, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, there's no other public comments. I'm going to close public comment at this time, and I'm going to bring it back to the commission for deliberations. Um, I'll just start again by saying, I would love the, uh, ag commission and the planning commission to be simpatico and in complete agreement on the ZTAs that apply, uh, the, the three that I mentioned that apply. And because this isn't any kind of emergency situation, I don't see why a little extra time wouldn't hurt. So when we get to it, I am going to make the motion that we table those three that are mentioned in, uh, Commissioner Hunsinger's letter, and I'll see how that lands. And then, um, we can vote on the other ones. I'll have them removed. I, I, Chris, go ahead.
Just wanted to, um, uh, make note of, um, of something. As we were talking a little bit more about the structure definition, it caused us to go back and look at the ordinance and the information.
Hold on one second. Rich, this was your question?
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I was looking at it right here.
Right. So I want to clarify, um, that there is a, a word needed to be added to the, to the definition. So I'm working off of page 173 in your, in your staff report package. Um, it's the definition of structure. And the last, uh, sentence that's in bold reads, "Projects that require electrical and/or plumbing permits are," and it should read, "not considered structures under this definition that are subject to development standards." So that was a, an error in drafting on the ordinance. Um, it, it is consistent with how the staff report reads, how our presentation reads, and comments that we made during this public hearing.
Okay.
Question. Say 173.
The, the strike through sent, the last one is the word "not." It's not there. "Not" is not there. It needs to be included. Last sentence in the bold. Rich.
Pardon?
"Are not considered."
Okay.
Yes. Add the word "not considered." "Not" before "considered." Any other commissioners have thoughts before deliberation? I mean, this is deliberations before the vote. Go on.
This end?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, just a couple of quick comments. Um, you know, I, I don't think we have a lot of choice other than to continue this and have, you know, as we continue to get documents that are going to take you five, six, seven hours of research, and you get them five, six, seven hours before the meeting, uh, you don't have a lot of options. So as we saw at our last big meeting, you know, we had 60, 70 pages of public comment that we received during the meeting.
Yep.
And we just got to figure out a better way to, I mean, it is what it is, and I don't know how you correct it, but, uh, you know, if, if individuals want us to do the right thing and make the right decisions and informed decisions, that we need to get the information and the ability to do that research a little sooner.
I, I had talked to both county council and the, and the clerk about that because our last meeting, like you said, we had hundreds of pages of documents, some of which showed up the morning of. There's no ability legally for them to say, there's a cutoff, right.
Their hands are tied.
Their hands are tied. But I, and, and, but I think it's important to say, if you want us to consider this stuff, you're, it's in your best interest, everybody, to get it to us in advance of these meetings. I know it's hard because some of this stuff isn't published till a week before.
Right.
Or two weeks before. So there's not a ton of time to do the research either, but it's a, I agree.
Yeah. And my only last comment is terms like in perpetuity. Uh, I mean, there's times when that's applicable and then there's times when it isn't. I don't necessarily support that strategy.
Sure.
Of defining that. I mean, very few things are in perpetuity, and even when they are in definition, they can be changed.
Agreed.
Anyway, so that's my comment.
Okay, I've.
Are we going to?
I've been reading the definition for bona fide agriculture. And, uh, what they're talking about here is, uh, is talking about the purpose of a commercial enterprise. As we're conducting agricultural research. And I guess what they're asking for is just to add the words in there, "by recognized, uh, educational institution." That would be a fairly easy fix for that particular item. And then, uh, as far as the grading ordinance go, that's already passed, and they're satisfied with the grading ordinance. So I don't know why we would want to include that one in a list for continuance.
So we can add in the word that the commission, ag commission wants included.
Yeah, that would be fairly easy, I think.
Yeah. Well, can we do the word smithing here?
This is on, this is on page 169.
Chris, page 169, can we do the word smithing here?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
Would, would the term of art, a more accredited educational in that, in that instance, rather than recognized?
Yeah, however you want to say it.
I like that. I like that.
That would apply to community colleges, universities, but they're accredited, not.
And even private.
Yeah, because I, I liked the fact that they specified this because you could say, I could pretend I'm doing all sorts of research on my property and get away with a lot of things, so.
I research my property every day.
So you would have our support, it sounds like, if you add those accredited, educational, is it facility?
Uh, recognized, accredited, educational institution.
Accredited, educational institution.
Recognized.
Recognized.
Accredited.
Accredited.
Educational institution.
Educational institution to that, and then we wouldn't have to.
For that item.
For that item. We wouldn't have to pull it. Can we do this word smithing here, Hannah? Are we going to table it?
So you can include, uh, since this is a recommendation to the board of supervisors, you can include a recommendation, you know.
Got it.
Adoption of this ordinance, um, also with these comments.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, you know, and I'd like to, uh, hear a better discussion about this idea of the 95% on the acreage, because, uh, I think what the ag people were interpreting, that this goes on to perpetuity, and, uh, they weren't really thinking in terms of the zoning limits. You know, if, if they want to go down below, if, you know, if they're going to split a 20-acre parcel, and it turns out that they don't really have 20 acres, but they want to split it into two 10 acres, and so they get the okay to do it, but then, uh, they've met the zoning. And so they're not going to be able to go beyond the zoning at that point, unless it's a five-acre zoning, and then I guess it could triple down to the five-acre zoning. But basically, it's limited by the zoning. And so they're saying a, uh, I forget what the word they used, but, uh, restricted. You know, it's restricted by the zoning that exists already. And so I think there's a little bit of confusion on their part in terms of what the real rules are. And then there's a lot of other things that come into play in the splits, you know? I mean, you got to, got to go through Health and Human Services and prove that you can provide water, and there's a lot of issues there that really pretty much come to play. And so, at any rate, I think, you know, if we want to hold it up to clarify this for the ag commission, that would be one thing to do. But basically, uh, I think there's a, there's a lot of, I mean, maybe staff can provide more information on that than I can, but basically, I'm wondering why we would hold it up at this point in time, understanding that the ag people may be a little bit upset with me, and, but.
Commissioner Dogren, uh, I'm sorry, Chair Dogren, um, if, if I may, um, you know, I, I do think that we could get to a, a solution on the definition of the bona fide agricultural use in consultation with the Agricultural Commissioner. Um, you know, as I mentioned previously, this item has taken quite some time, um, to, to be brought before you, but if we did continue the item, uh, maybe to, um, one of the meetings in December, give us time to work with them to at least get that amendment resolved, um, to their satisfactor, to his satisfaction, and then bring that back, um, to you.
Well, I think Rich's suggestion on adding, and everyone's suggestion really, to add in the accredited, educational, blah, 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 that we said, those four words, if you stick that one in, I won't ask for a motion to pull that. You can send that right on over to the board of supervisors. And I think that meets the Agricultural Commission's desire for that particular item. I'm still hung up on minimum lot area and minimum parcel size deviation based on this letter, but I'm off of bona fide agricultural definition.
Okay, understood. Uh, we, we don't have them here today, so, or the Agricultural Commissioner, so if he were, perhaps he could, um, opine as if to, that change would satisfy.
Yeah.
Uh, there, uh, but without him here, we, we don't know. And so, again, the continuance will give us some, an opportunity to.
Okay.
Work with them to get that resolved.
He wants to.
If it's continued, then, uh, they can, they can clean up all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. That's my desire. That's my desire.
And then we won't be making a recommendation. It'll be cleaned up.
That's my desire.
Okay.
And if you guys are inclined to move for a continuance today, you could continue it to a date and time certain, um, to alleviate additional noticing for this item when it comes back.
Now, Hannah, since it's presented in number two, oh, Lord, um, is it better that, for you all, is it better that we continue the whole thing? Or is it better that we parse out pieces? No.
No, I would recommend that we continue the entire package.
Okay.
And I, if, if you are entertaining that, I would recommend that we continue it to the December 18th.
Okay.
Uh, meeting at, uh, 9:00 AM or soon thereafter.
Okay. I thought it'd be easier for you all if I, we just pulled out the ones that we were, okay. It's not easier. Then I won't do that. Um, any other questions? I mean, we're in deliberation, sorry. Any other comments? Commissioner Beckler?
Yeah. Are you finished, though, Rich?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Okay. Um, just a couple of comments. I think most of my questions are answered. I'm, I will say, on the minimum lot area and the parcel deviation, um, initially, when we heard this, I think it was an informational item, I was like adamantly opposed to this concept. As I thought through the, like, scale and size, it's, it's not, it's not as bad as I thought, I guess. And so I'm hoping that even if we do continue it, it seems like for the minimum parcel size deviation, you know, I don't know if the solution is permanently deeding parcels. I, and I think that there are, I agree with Rich, that there are also restrictions in the underlying zoning.
Agreed.
And if you only can split it into two, not indefinitely keep splitting, it seems reasonable, but maybe it is just a clarifying language. Um, but the one thing I will say that is probably a little more concerning about the, that minimum parcel size is. is if the, if cumulative effects for, you know, water availability, you know, traffic, all that kind of stuff are assuming set number of parcels and size, like, this isn't accommodated. And I know we got a letter like in the meeting from someone in District Two that said, you know, all they really want to do is split their family farm into, which completely understandable and makes sense. And I think then the question is if everyone splits it, even though it's such a small deviation, then everyone can have a single-family house, an ADU, a junior ADU, another ADU. So it isn't, it isn't just the, so on the, even though I actually think that it seems supportable to me, because there's enough restrictions in place, I do see some of the concerns behind it. And then the other thing I wanted to say, just because the gentleman, the pastors here, I know the one in Granite Bay was controversial. Even if we sign, even if we were to approve these digital sign agreements, if the Granite Bay Community Plan, I don't know if he's paying attention, but the Granite Bay Community Plan disallows it, it's still, he's not going to be able to get the digital sign potentially, so...
Sir, sir. Hello? Can you repeat?
I was just saying that, you know, because you came to mention the church in Granite Bay, and I know there's been some controversy around that, just want to make sure that you are aware that even if we do approve this, whether the now or with the continuance, it doesn't mean that in Granite Bay, the community plan allows them. So there's still sort of that hurdle, if you will. I just wanted to make sure you are aware, because I know, you know, this is great. I think it gives established boundaries. But just know that if the community plan says no digital signs, that still supersedes the requirement. So just wanted, okay, thanks. And then the other thing I wanted to say, I know we didn't talk about it, but I just want to say with the subdivision signs in, I don't know if it affects you guys in your districts, but there are subdivision signs littered all over the roadways. And what I learned actually through this process is that, you know, subdivision signs are limited to two, and they can't be in off-premise, they can't be in roadways, private or public. And they also have to state the name and the phone number of the development, and it's enforceable via code. So if I'm understanding that right, only two signs are allowed off-premise, because I see every Saturday morning, five-thirty, people are out popping those yard signs into the development. So what I'm hearing is that this clarifies, and then it just illustrates that that isn't allowed, actually. Correct?
Oh, we're getting a lot of enforcement calls for me.
That is correct, yeah. It was a long-winded comment, but...
Okay, who, what's the phone number for enforcement? Because I will be calling this weekend.
And I don't mean to like try to get people in trouble, but it is really...
Oh, the ones that say turn around, go back, and...
It's really bad. I know, it's really bad.
Good to know.
Well, you're talking about a subdivision sign.
Yes, yes.
Now, the county did require, if somebody's going to have a subdivision, that they have a four-by-whatever sign
On premise.
on their property, so everybody knows that they're going to subdivide their property.
Right.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, what I learned when I researched this one is that only two off-site signs are allowed. In Granite Bay, as an example, there's hundreds of yard signs along all the roadways pointing to the various new subdivisions that have been put in, and that's actually not allowed.
Well, these are ones that are being proposed, I'm thinking.
Now, you're thinking about the noticing, Rich.
Yeah.
Different thing.
Yeah.
Those are my comments. My hope is that if we do continue this, that the county will go back and work with the Ag Commission just for edification and clarification, a little cleanup. I don't think this is a big deal. I think this could all easily be worked out. I agree, you can let them know that the commissioners who commented agree that in perpetuity is just too stake in the ground. But there's, could be some work around that. There could be some wording around that that could get everybody to agreement. I think this is an easy fix. I just don't think we're ready today. That's just my... Anybody else? All right, I am going to make a motion that we continue this item to December eighteenth meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chair, Chair Dogren, can you just also clarify at nine AM or soon thereafter?
At nine AM or somewhere thereafter.
Soon thereafter.
Soon thereafter, nine oh one. At, December eighteenth at nine, you have a first from me, a second from Commissioner Johnson. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Dogren?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Beckler?
Yes.
Jewel?
Yes.
Alf?
Yes.
Is this appealable? No, because I continued it. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Goodbye.